Okay. Good morning, everybody.
Excuse me. That's our table. We don't want it on there.
Okay, I'll put it right here.
Take it off our table, please.
You're serious? Nice. I love that. Okay.
You can put it anywhere you like.
Yeah, I will. Is this your chair too, Jay? Or is this your chair too?
Okay, we're live. Okay, good morning, everybody. I guess in lieu of the fact that we have not heard from Commissioner Katnick, I will take charge of the meeting, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. And it is 9:03. And if we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call. Commissioner Katnick. Commissioner Hood.
Present.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present. Thank you. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
I do not.
Okay, I do not either. Okay, let's move on to the audience introduction.
John Johnston.
Bob Drayer.
Dallas Anderson, Airport Advisory Board.
Jackie Bubus, Sentinel.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Question. Is Commissioner Katnick ill or anything?
The last we heard was that he was attending a funeral in Arizona. And then, I guess the spouse of that person went dramatically downhill, and he had to take care of business. But we haven't heard from him since. Okay. Any other? Okay. I, we have no approval of minutes from the last time.
No, I have a stat ready, but I didn't want to send it to you guys when you were at conference, so we'll just do it at that next.
Okay. Thank you.
Send it up the next one.
Okay, Commissioner Items. Jay?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. You and I attended a conference in Keystone, CCI Conference, their summer conference. Spectacular conference, talked about a lot of things that we as commissioners need to know, how to deal with the public better, lots and lots of wonderful things. You may want to talk more on that when. Affordable housing. We met, and it looks like we're going to have some good news to report in the not-too-distant future about being able to provide additional affordable housing for the community. Nothing's in stone, but it's looking pretty good. Other than that, I've just been busy with my normal stuff.
Okay.
I could just update you on Wetmore, if you like.
Sure.
Okay. The Wetmore building is essentially completed. The keys are ready to be turned over. I'm sure you saw the memo. We did the punch list last week. That went real well. Our architect did a very thorough job on that. There was one sink that was unintentionally omitted, and they're going ahead and add that at their cost. There was a mop sink downstairs in the electronics room. There was one upstairs that was called for. They had to move it, and then they forgot to put it in. The architect found it, and they're going to be installing that. We need to establish how we're going to administer the building, what procedures it takes to reserve it, the policies and all those kind of things. But essentially, it's done. Just a few minor touch-ups that, you know, may take a week or so, fixing broken tiles and things like that. But essentially, the building looks complete, just for our knowledge. I know this is all coming ahead, but I had it written down anyway. The contract total cost of the project was supposed to be $760,324. The actual cost as of this moment is $836,000. The difference or additions that were added to the building, for example, the handicap restroom that the inspector needed, the grease trap that we thought was there that wasn't, that had to be installed, and numerous other minor things that needed to make the building appropriate. As of this moment, our Custer County portion of the fees on that is about $235,000. May go up a little bit more on some minor changes that we have to make, but I feel comfortable saying that the county's expense in that building will be a $250 less. So I'm feeling pretty good. Building's fantastic. I encourage everybody to go down and use it, enjoy it. It is a community building.
Okay.
That's what I have on that.
I just want to add that I did hear from the contractor that all the keys are ready, so we're going to set up a time to meet so that we get all of the keys to the building. Also, when we did our punch list, what wasn't acceptable to me was the way SentryLink provided the phone lines outside. So it's my understanding that Chuck is down there today. He still needed to test some of the data lines inside, so I'm going to wait for his report. And then I will be, I think I'm going to go down and take a picture of what that looks outside to speak to the gentleman that we had been conversing to. So just added information on the building.
There'll also be some roadwork that our county road and bridge will do to level the ground, put in the right kind of dirt and that kind of thing. So as opposed to getting additional expenses, we'll have work with road and bridge to get that done when they have time to do it.
Okay. So, under Commissioner Items, I would like to add that I found the CCI Foundation Summer Conference really beneficial as a new commissioner. It's a chance to network with commissioners that have similar issues going on in their counties. Even the larger counties are having similar issues. So, very rewarding. Got a lot of nice experience and made some new friends. We also had a policy workshop with the elected officials last Thursday. And I want to thank Kelly and all of the other elected officials. I thought a couple of hours, I think we spent almost three hours together. I'm going to say we got to know each other a little better. And we're going to set similar workshops up going to the future just to hash out any issues, and it's good communication. So I found that also very beneficial. And Dennis Hunt was there as our facilitator, and we set up a budget training meeting next with him. So all good stuff came out of that. All right, next, Attorney Items. Clint?
Concerning the Wetmore Community Center, we have the formal open house scheduled for June 21st. I happened to speak to John Naylor yesterday, and he is planning on coming. I was going to tell Brenda, but I don't know how many, you know, as far as an RSVP.
Where we are?
I was going to just, but I realized Mike's there right now, so.
Yeah, I saw a written one that she sent to us from Kathy Garcia of Senator Gardner's office, but I haven't seen anything else. I was going to ask her.
Brenda?
Yes?
I was just going to ask, John Naylor, I talked to him yesterday. He is going to come to the open house at the Wetmore Community Center. But if you don't get an RSVP as to the numbers, because he may bring his whole family.
Okay.
And while you're at it, my wife and I are going to come.
Okay.
That's my official RSVP. Next, I want to talk about the resolution we talked about at our last meeting, honoring certain county employees. I have that prepared, and Brenda has it and has prepared it in a nice form suitable for framing. So I asked Brenda if she could arrange through the department head a date for that to happen, so.
We can get it done.
And he can make sure he has them all present.
Okay, great.
But I think she did a great job fitting it onto a, was that 11 by 14?
Yes.
And I had the honor of speaking before the Rotary Club on Monday in my capacity as Vice President of Dark Skies. I talked to them about what Dark Skies is trying to do through the county as far as what we may need, and I explained, and I tried to make it very clear that I wear two hats, and I was there as the Dark Skies representative, but, you know, I also am the county attorney. Jim Bradburn and I did have a meeting with Vic Barnes and Jackie Hobbit to discuss options as to how we might want to proceed. We have some ideas. But the public meeting that's scheduled for June 22nd is still on. I think that's very important, to get all the public input. So it'll be 6:00 PM at the bowling alley. And we'll have something prepared in writing that we think might work, but we'll get that to you ahead of time, so you will all have a chance to look at it. And I'll have copies ready so that you can hand it out to everybody who comes to the meeting to see what the proposal is. And then finally, a couple of weeks ago, I had submitted a first draft of a resolution concerning the cattle guards that Dr. Hamilton has asked for. And we sent a copy to Dr. Hamilton, his property manager. Marvin Boyd came in at the last meeting, and the last meeting, I talked to him about it, and I sent a copy, or Mike had a copy, I think, that he gave to his attorney. I've heard from both sides. I think we had some issues that need to be resolved. I don't, I got a feeling I'm not going to be able to negotiate something that's going to be acceptable to them. So maybe necessary to have a meeting where both sides have an opportunity to come in and explain what they would like to see with regard to those cattle guards.
Are we trying to do that sooner than later?
I would say sometime in June, and maybe we can do it in the, well, the meeting, now, the meeting in June is still going to be in San Isabel, right? And we're coming back to the Wetmore Community Center, I think.
No, no, we changed it, so it'll all be in one spot.
So, okay, we are going to be meeting. I don't know whether we want to try to do that then or not. But we may need to set aside at least a half an hour or so for both sides to say whatever they want to say. But I haven't actually heard back. Well, I take it back. I have heard back from both sides, and I think they're kind of far apart on certain issues.
Well, how about if we just schedule it so we get it done? Otherwise, you're waiting again till the end of the month.
Let's do that.
Okay. Well, I think it would be easier for all parties. If Mike's attorney is going to be there, he comes from Canyon City. And if, I'm sure Mr. Boyd will be there and be after Dr. Hamilton. He comes from Colorado Springs, so it'll be easier to do it in Wetmore. So if we can schedule it for the Wetmore meeting on the 21st then.
Brenda, you have that.
Let's add that to the agenda.
On the agenda, yeah.
That's all I.
Clint's saying at least a half an hour. Set aside.
That's all I had to report today.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a question about that before we go too far. I don't feel that we should be a judge in hearing two sides of an issue and then making a decision as to who we prefer over party A or party B. And I have concerns about if we ruffle the feathers on either side by making a decision that the other person, either side, it really doesn't matter whether we do it or don't do it. I'm concerned about getting into more litigation with the county being involved for doing or not doing what one party wants. I would really like some legal opinion as to what is our obligation to putting in a cattle guard if someone wants it and another person chooses not to want it? Or vice versa? One saying, "I don't want it," or we obligated not to put it in? So I, I'm very concerned. I don't want to get back into a legal situation where we have a legal fight going on.
It's something that's strictly discretionary with the county based on whether we feel it's something necessary or desirable. It's, you know, they're, the pro part of it is that the person, the party who wants it, whose property it will cross, is offered to pay for all of the costs of it. There's no expense to the county except maintaining it. And without going into a lot of detail, the other side is that, and it has to do more with existing fences and whether those fences should be removed or not. And that's, the law's very clear that the property owner, you know, who has these fences can choose to remove them or keep them there. So I think it's fairly cut and dry. I don't see any legal liability from what the county, but I think it would be fair to give both sides a chance to say what they want about it. And then there's this decision made on necessity, you know, based on the reasons that are offered. So I, I don't think there's any legal issue, but I think we should give both sides a chance to address the board directly.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Executive session.
I would like to ask for an executive session if we have time today, probably towards the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Would be my suggestion. I would ask to amend the agenda to put it at the end of the meeting. It's to discuss a personal issue that has cropped up in the last week or so. And I'd like to discuss it with you. And I'm sorry, Bob's not here, and have some legal advice on what's the best way to proceed, if we proceed at all.
Okay. I don't see an issue with putting that at the end.
So can I make a motion that we amend the agenda to put the executive session at the end of the regular agenda so that we don't disrupt all the people who are here and make them stand around for a long time?
All right, I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Old and new business. First up is the airport. We're actually ahead of schedule.
I have old business.
You have old business?
Yes.
Okay, that's not on, I'm sorry.
Well, because it was old business, I added to the agenda.
Okay, all right, sorry.
We're talking about the engineered septic systems versus having the person or persons who do the soil analysis for installation of the septic systems, putting up in lieu of engineered systems, posting insurance. Just to remind you, what's going on on that is, since the county signs off on the septic system, we inspect it. The county does take on liability by inspecting it if there is a septic system failure. And I have no issues with that, except the one issue that we cannot verify in an inspection is whether the soil sample, which is the prelude to designing the system, was done properly or not. If, if the soil analysis is done incorrectly, the system will be incorrect, and a failure occurs after we sign off saying it's okay. And there'd be no way for, our planning and zoning office, who does the inspection, to know that that soil sample was handled improperly. So the question came up, and we had made a resolution, and we drew it last time, that, not a resolution, a motion, that we would require the soil analysis, individuals or company, to carry liability insurance in the event that they do have an error and the system fails. The county is not held out to dry if they don't have insurance. Kitshai suggested an engineered system, which will solve that problem. It will not, it will take away from the people who do the soil sample. An engineered system is a different thing. My only concern with that is, and I have no problem with the engineered system, except that it's going to increase the cost of septic system between $8,000 and $10,000. So it's a very significant increase in the cost of the system versus the cost to the individual to buy insurance is, based upon what Jackie Hobby told me. She spoke to a couple of the underwriters, and they said that probably in the $1,000 range for Arizona mission liability. So I think the question's really on the table. We, as it sits right now, we, the county sits right now, we take on that liability if the soil analysis is, is an error and we sign off on it. Engineered septic system, certainly resolve it, but at a considerably higher cost. Or do we want the soil analysis folks to go ahead and have to have insurance as our contractors and the rest of them do? We originally said in a motion, and it was passed unanimously, that we would require the insurance. There was some negative feedback on that, I understand. And Kitshai suggested the engineered system, which will work. It will solve the issue that I'm concerned about, which is our liability. It's just a cost issue. And I just wanted to bring that up under old business because we asked Clint to prepare a resolution, because it needs to be by resolution, that we require engineered systems as opposed to what we have now. So I really just opened this for discussion on what way do we want to go. If we still want to do a resolution, I'm fine. A septic system needs to be installed properly, and we need to get out of the liability that we have. And that's all I'm concerned about.
Clint.
Jackie Hobby is going to be here this afternoon. She's on the agenda, and there's a specific category for the Health Department because this is an issue that the county commissioners would have to consider sitting as the Board of Health. And I believe that there are going to be some interested individuals showing up at that time, I think around 2:00 o'clock or so. So I would suggest we just wait on it until that time and talk about it so we can have input from anybody that, from the public wants to talk about it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
You're okay with that.
And we will have to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting, go into sitting as the Board of Health to talk about that at that time.
May I ask one question, because I won't be able to be here? If this is a state permit, why would the county be liable?
It's not a state permit. The, the state has to sign off on interior plumbing on construction, but septic systems are county by county.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was the state.
No, and a lot of, a lot of counties have gone to engineered systems exclusively. But we're in the minority. I think, I'm not sure what the number is, but there are very few counties left that give the option of doing so. It used to be perk tests, now it's soil analysis tests. So that's going to be the issue. But it is for the county to make that decision.
Anything further?
Nope. Okay.
I guess under old business, I did get to visit with Beth from SIPA regarding the grant that we discussed on May 17th. And she's, has been back to her office. She's been traveling, doing shows. She is aware of the fact, I guess it was a housekeeping issue on their end, to just allocate what grants are going to be done by June 30th. So we'll hear from her after June 30th on different levels of equipment and costs to move forward. Okay. That's it, under old business. So we're going to go to staff reports. The airport. Dallas, would you like to come?
Sure.
Good morning, sir.
Morning.
Good morning.
It's still brand new.
It looks good on you, Dallas.
Okay. I've got two items that I was not able to get in your packet. This first one is a letter of interest by Trey Crosscall. He wants to be on the board. You should have the monthly report in your packet.
I do.
Okay, and a second item that I couldn't get to you is the fuel, this is in conjunction with the fuel report. Just info as to what the fuel prices around us look like. Want a copy of that, please? And then a real important one here. This is from our credit card processing. And we are required, by the end of this month, to upgrade the software and hardware on our credit card machine. And it's going to cost $945. And we have, we have the money in our repairs and maintenance budget. It's just that, since it's over $300, we have to request permission from the board to expand those funds.
Dallas, we discussed this, I was at the board meeting with you, and this was discussed. If you would make sure I remember correctly, this is not really an option. This is something that is really a mandatory thing. Is that correct?
It is, yes. It is definitely mandatory. We could be fined upwards, so.
God, it's ridiculous.
Can I say something?
Certainly.
You, I bet you have a credit card machine, and so do I.
Right.
I don't ever remember, in 12 years, 11 years, where I've been in business, I don't ever remember anybody making me upgrade my system other than the company that we do business with, which is merchant services, whatever.
Right.
Making me MasterCard, charging me $900 bucks just to upgrade my software. I, I just, somebody really needs to check into that, because.
I was really surprised when I saw this. That was a contentious discussion.
Right.
You know, I've had off on my business when they upgraded. They say to me, "You're ready for an upgrade, download it." And there are whatever percentage they take as they face. Dallas, have we looked into this any further? Thank you. Have we looked into this any further to make sure that this is something that's not, I mean, is this a scam? I mean, I had a guy come to my office who wanted to charge me $10 to look at my fire extinguishers and certify. And it turned out, he's a little independent guy, making $10 every time he comes to a store. Is this the same type of thing?
As far as, as I know, and I, my only information was from Bob Jolly, that this is on the up and up, and we're liable to, is that fine? We don't upgrade the equipment?
Well, is the upgrade, is the upgrade because of the chips?
No, it's because of MasterCard changing their, what they call the VIN number. Business internet something. There was a, there was a letter explaining what the VIN number was and all that. And it just, just the fact that MasterCard changed their VIN system. Everybody in the world has to upgrade their.
Except for me and Jay Prince?
Yeah.
And it's only MasterCard?
Quit taking MasterCard.
That was my vote.
Yeah.
But are you saying?
That was one of my recommendations also, to stop taking MasterCard.
How, how did Bob Jolly refer that this was on the up and up?
Well, Bob Jolly, as the airport manager, he's been in contact and worked with QT Pod World Fuel for years and years and years. And.
Did he contact our neighboring airports to see if they got the same letter?
I doubt it. I don't think so.
That's a great suggestion. Jay?
Yes. Bob Jolly really knows the fuel.
I know he does.
Yeah. He knows, he knows the fuel systems and everything.
And this is, what we're really going to get is a standalone pod, is what you're going to buy.
Well, we.
Because I did have to buy the machine. And if this is the purchase of the machine.
No, no, it's only for the upgrade. It's a software upgrade.
Looks like they're wanting you to upgrade if you don't have their.
Gold or platinum.
Service plans, right.
Services.
Which costs you $900 a year, anyway. Right.
Yeah, so.
So we do not have a service plan in place?
No, we do not, because.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation was stop taking MasterCard. And I looked at, I looked through about six months of fuel reports. Not a MasterCard one. one was plugged into that machine.
Does this need to be a motion, or is this something that we just discussed, Clint?
Well, he's asking because it's above their $300 authorization.
Is that, is that a motion that we do, or not?
Well, if we're going to accept their recommendation, they can just make that decision not to accept MasterCard. We were going to do it, you need to do it by motion to approve the expenditure.
Okay. Then I'll go on the record and say that I feel your recommendation to not accept MasterCard because of this exorbitant fee. I concur with that as Commissioner.
I agree.
Is there anything that can go out as a NOTAM, so pilots know coming in?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put that, I think we can put that as a NOTAM. And on AirNav, there's an informational block on AirNav, that right now it says that the pump's out of order. We can, we can put that on there that we no longer accept MasterCard. Like I say, for six, last six months, there has not been a MasterCard plugged into that machine.
This is what we call in the vernacular, a no-brainer.
I, I would like to see Mr. Jolly follow up with a phone call and say what the decision was, with this company.
Okay.
Just for the record.
Thanks for bringing that to us. Appreciate your work on that.
So anyway, that's, that was the, the big panic thing, I was panicked about it. Okay. As to my report agenda, we met on May 18th, we have four members present, along with Commissioner Prince. Trey Crosscall, a, a new hangar owner-to-be, he's rented space already, and he told about the hangar he plans to build. It's on the cutting edge of technology and all nifty. We approved the minutes from April 20th meeting. The fuel report, I gave you the fuel report. Okay. Reason that I didn't put the fuel report on, because I filed this monthly report before I went to Arizona, and that I didn't get the fuel report till I got back. But we sold 455 gallons in May, and we now have 945 gallons left in the tank.
And you're coming up to your busy season.
Which means that we're, yeah, we're coming up on the busy season. We have about 700 gallons to sell, since our policy is not going to go below 250 gallons in the tank because of condensation and such. The last fuel price that, that I had was, oh, yeah, it's on there, 352. And if we bought fuel at that price, our selling price would go up to 441 instead of 399. Although yesterday I hear that the price of oil went down by about $7. So by the time we get lined up for another load of fuel, hopefully the price will be down again, so that we can be closer to 399.
Are you looking to share this, like you've done in the past, with another airport?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Sure. Yeah. If we, if we ordered fuel on our own, we would have to take 3,000 gallons instead of two, and that would, you know, put another third on our budget, and we, at the moment, probably couldn't handle that. So, yeah, we always look for an airport to share a load with. And then we've already talked about the, the upgrade on the credit card software. The flying in and open house, that's going to be the August 23rd, when we finalize that date. And Alan Butler is the chairman on that committee, and we're all volunteered to help him with anything that needs, needs to be done. He's well on his way, planning with posters and signage and advertisements and stuff.
Is there anything we can do to help with that?
At this point, we pretty well have it in hand.
Was it September or August? That's a Wednesday, August 23rd.
I think it was September.
Oh, September.
September.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, September 23rd. Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, I've got it on my calendar already.
Yeah.
Is that a Saturday?
It's a Saturday.
Yeah.
Okay. And we also discussed work to be done this summer. We have some science to put up and weeds to be mowed, of course, and we have a little bit of fence repair. The weather cover for the credit card machine, we're going to buy a new one, and it's $100, so we can spend that easily. The wind just beat it all that we live. And it doesn't always get closed up tight after people use it sometimes. And we adjourned at 11:30 AM. Any questions I might answer?
I do. Request of Mr. Crosscall, is, did I pronounce that correctly?
Crosscall, yes.
Crosscall. To join the airport board, do you guys have a recommend, I mean, does your board have a recommendation?
We have a unanimous recommendation for him, yes. He is a 30-plus-year command pilot. His wife also has already signed up as a airport volunteer, and she was a command pilot also. So they have lots of experience as pilots, and so they should bring a lot of good ideas and knowledge about policies and procedures for airports.
That's good.
Okay.
Are they full-time residents?
They are full-time residents now, yes.
Okay. I mean, normally we accept these letters prior to the January meeting for consideration, so can he sit on committee before he's actually appointed?
I, I don't know.
That's been the policy in the past, if somebody, if there's a recommendation to add somebody to the board during the year.
And the reason that we bring this recommendation is because we do have an open spot on the We have room for seven voting, voting members, and we have six members right now, so.
I think I'm just going to defer to what our normal policy has been. I know in other organizations, they have that person just sit on committee, and then the recommendation follows. So for January.
Whatever your policy is, yeah.
But I think we could, I think it'd be safe to say that we would welcome him on the board when the procedure allows him to come on. This is not anything negative, it's just procedure.
We'll just let him.
Yeah, just let him sit.
Assume the position ad hoc, and right to the end of the year for a formal.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
Good job.
Okay.
One last issue. Are we dispensing fuel now?
No.
What is the status there? I'm not asking about personal issues, I'm just asking about dispensing.
I can only think of one thing at a time. We have canceled Matt's pump repair for any more action on the pump. The new pump will be installed next Monday, the 12th.
Yep.
And we figured that instead of going ahead and letting Matt's pump repair get a part in that we'll have to pay for.
Right.
And the pump is beyond repair as far as I'm concerned. We only got five days left to sit without fuel. So we fired him, well, we just asked him not to proceed, and we'll assist Eaton any way we can next Monday, get the new one installed and ready to go.
Just assure me that whatever notifications that the airport puts out there that fuel's not available at the present time, that's been done, right?
It has been done, yes.
Perfect, I'm good. Thank you. I have nothing else?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And cleaning will resume shortly. I'm actually going to be bringing somebody down this afternoon, so you may, if you're down there, you may see me.
Okay, well, I wasn't planning on going down, not, not much I could do till we get new pump.
I've got the, yep, I've got the.
You look like an Air Force pilot today.
Well, I feel that.
You had asked me, I'm sorry, you had asked me if the cleaning person was going to do that, and that's not in there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
We can cover that.
Thank you, sir.
You can't get a grave without shaking, man. See you next time.
I love it.
Okay.
Thank you very much, guys.
I don't see Tim. Can you?
Yeah, I texted Tim, but he might be in a meeting till 10, so would you like me to call Laura and see if she can come down now?
Yes, please. Clint, have you ever seen this while we're waiting? I got you one of those.
Actually, I have seen this.
Uh, yeah.
Super thank you.
Okay, thanks, bye. She's running.
This is for me? Thanks.
It's a souvenir.
Okay.
As soon as they find her.
Because I'm running the show.
I don't go there.
I'm sorry, Brenda, did you say she was running?
She's in the building somewhere. As soon as they find her, they'll send her down.
Okay.
So I'm going to also text Gary, I'm going to let him know we're running it.
Yep.
Hi there, how are you?
I'm good, thank you, Laura.
Hi, Laura.
Hi.
Thanks for juggling your schedule.
Oh, that's okay. It's all the same, they're going, the commissioners are ready, and I'm like, oh my gosh, I don't even know where my stuff is. I don't know what I'm doing. Of course, I don't know what I'm doing most of the time, so.
Okay. Never miss that one.
I know. It is what it is.
I've got it, I actually printed it out.
Okay. Do you have it? Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I realize one reason you guys were having a little bit of trouble was when Ron was emailing that to you, was sending all of the stuff I gave him to actually do the reports, you guys were getting way too much stuff.
Okay.
And he goes, oh, I'm going, why aren't we getting that? And he goes, like, must just send it. So we did it differently, so you're not getting all that stuff, which was probably really confusing you.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. All right. You guys have any questions about the form, the budget, or, I mean, anything?
I've been doing this for a while, and I still have a hard time.
Time, understanding it.
Yeah.
And I try to make it, you know, we can start at the top if you want to.
Which?
On this one. This, and this is the most confusing one.
Okay.
And where it says TANF and daycare, that's, we have a maintenance of effort, and we have to pay that, so that's why I show that, that's what the county has to pay.
Okay.
And so then I just show you how many payments we made for that, and then the budget, and how, where we are on that. Anything, and because, and we're going to go over that, because we only have to pay it, if we go over it, and certain amount, it will show that, but we don't, but we're okay. We're not over that, so never mind. I'm looking at the monitor. We're good.
Okay.
Because we have to stay with, that's what we're budgeted, and that, and that's what we'll pay for that. Because that's all we have to contribute to TANF and daycare, is, is those amounts there. And then on the, the next one, that's admin, and that's an 80/20, so we break it out that way. And it just shows how much for admin. A&amp;D's 80/20, foster care's 80/20, so we have them groups, so you can see where that is. And then the next group is ones where it's just pass-through, pass-through, Medicaid Transportation, EOC, CSVG, those are just pass-throughs. We budget for them because we have to pay, and then we get reimbursed. So that's why those are budgeted that way. And then, and then the rest of them are like LEAP and food and OAP, those are all, all state and federal, and we don't, we don't do anything with those.
Okay.
But we just show you how many we have, so you can see how many clients and stuff that we're working with on a day-to-day basis, so that gives you some idea on that. Did that help?
Yes. But remind me, please, what OAP is?
Um, well, now that you ask me that.
Right out of your head?
Yeah. Yes.
There's so many acronyms.
Oh, I know, yeah. It's old age pension. And it's for anybody that's over 60 years old.
That's good, I just saw that.
Yeah, OAP.
I don't remember what it is.
Yeah. And so, yeah, they have to be over 60, and their income cannot be over a certain amount, and their resources cannot be over a certain amount for that. And then the next page is the allocations on that, and we're doing okay on that. And at the end of this fiscal year, because this is a fiscal, at the beginning, I'm going to change this form up, but we only have a couple more months on that one, so I don't want to mess.
Is that this one?
Yes. Yeah. And then the next one is community service block grant, and that's pretty self-explanatory. It's just a block grant. We get it, and then we get so much money, and we have to stay in that, in there because it's a grant. And then EOC, same thing. And at EOC, I just got done renewing this grant for next year. I requested 15,000, I requested 15,000 last year, we only got 10. We're going to see what we get this year. We hope we get a little bit more, because I've already had three applications in on that this month. One of them was for quite a bit, and so we're probably not going to have, it goes through September, and we're not going to make it through September, because we're not going to have enough funds in that. So I'm hoping they give us more money.
When would you expect that?
It'll come in.
Is this July? July?
Uh, no, this one, the Energy Outreach runs through September 30th, so we won't get any more money until October.
Okay.
But I've already done that, and they've got everything they need, and they come up and they did an audit, and everything was fine. They all do audits, and everything was fine. And then the next one was, just, this just shows the number of households receiving food, food benefits, and that's pretty self-explanatory there. And then the chief ad, the commodity food that we get, and how many households that we serve with that.
I mean, just looking at this, February and March are the hard months for people.
Yeah. Yeah, winter months, we have, yeah, more, that's for sure. We've seen more people applying in the winter months, starting about December, and February and through there.
Okay.
And then it kind of slacks off a little bit. But, do you have any questions?
Yep.
Jay's thinking.
Okay. Always ask the same question, anything unusual this month?
No.
We need to know about?
No.
Okay.
No.
Anything percolate in the way it's supposed to?
Everything is, is fine, so far. It, we're at the end of, we're coming up on the end of the fiscal year for the state, so we're having to renew a lot of contracts and that type of stuff. We do for core services, which is child welfare. We work with mental health and Rocky Mountain behavior, and we have to have contracts with them. So we're redoing the contracts, those are, we're not making any changes, doing, it's just workforce, have to do a contract with workforce, so doing that one. Just a lot, we'll have to do other security measures because they expire, so we're doing all of that, but nothing out of the ordinary, it's just normal.
Is there anything you need from us that could help you do your job better?
Room?
Well, we're just.
I know.
And we're working on it, seriously, we are.
I, I know you are. I know you are, I just.
It's not a quick thing.
I, I know we are, and just, yeah, today we had somebody that was supposed to show up for an interview with our case manager for the TANF program, and so she came today, and so we don't have any place to put her. Break rooms being used, the, we usually go downstairs, can't go downstairs, we can't come in here. So we ran, I ran Linda out of her office, and so we're just going to have to have you meet in here, but we work around it, but, but that's why.
I have a question on this report. How come we? How come we are not listed as a county on that?
I don't know what that is. I don't, I don't know what this is.
That came across as one of the reports. You never saw that before.
What is that?
I don't know.
I don't know, I printed it out as part of the reports that I got. I mean, it just, it looks like with those statistics when you're looking at.
I don't.
I don't, I don't know it, cause let me see that again, because it says.
Oh, you know what? Okay, I know what this is.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, cause I'm like, I don't, I don't know.
We're stuck with all that stuff.
Yeah, I'm like, I don't know what that is.
Okay.
It said total beds, and so I'm like, we, we don't have beds.
Yeah.
She needs to.
Yeah, we could do some, isn't it? We could do some beds. Usually when they're talking about beds, it's mental health, or it's something like that.
All right, well, just an FYI, the plumber is starting to work today?
Oh, okay.
And I understand there's a valve in your closet downstairs, we may need access to.
Oh, that's fine, just, just let us know. Just come get me, and we'll, we'll unlock it, sure.
Okay.
No problem.
That's good.
Yeah, there is a, something down there, isn't it? Yeah.
Turns on that one right under your window.
Yep.
According to kit. On the outside.
Oh. Well, I don't know where that is in the closet.
That may not be the closet.
I don't think so. You know, when we were down there that, one day, that big pipe goes through there, but I've never seen, I've never seen, I, I, I haven't seen a valve down there.
Well, and when I turn it on up there, you can hear water there, that's what's weird. If it was off, you wouldn't even hear it. We'll just go in another treasure home again.
Scary, if you don't know where the water's going.
I know, well, and where, yeah. And where's the valve?
I went downstairs to look to make sure there wasn't water coming from the inside anywhere, but I didn't see anything.
No.
All right, so you may see me.
Oh, no, that's fine, just come on down, and we'll, we'll check that out, but now that you're saying that, no, I haven't seen a valve, I thought maybe it was something to do with that very large pipe and all that good stuff, but no. Okay, all right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Hi, Clint, I'll see you later.
Okay, Tim, I saw you come in.
Yep.
All right. It's Thursday.
Good to see you.
How you doing?
I'm doing fine.
Good, good.
Good morning, sir.
How are you doing?
Good morning.
Morning, morning. Thank you, ma'am.
Or you.
Good, good. All right. We're missing somebody today.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so who's, who's, are you signing then, today?
I guess I am.
I'll give you the original, then.
Okay.
And then I'll give you all your copies. Okay. I'll give you that copy. There's your copy. Thanks. Here's one for you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. Pretty, pretty short and sweet today. Cover a couple things real quick, of course, the monthly report, which I handed you. Um, pretty busy month, ninety appointments per month, seventy phone calls, two home visits. One of the home visits was across the street at the Sheriff's Detention Center, so last couple months, we've had a couple of vets in there, so. So, to do eighty-five plus on a month, we're not doing veteran trust fund, is a busy, busy month, it's, uh, so we're pretty busy this month. Database, if you look at the, uh, last page, or next to the last page, sorry, I highlighted, uh, every month report, the run total, uh, last, in the last month, we had three sixty-two, we had eleven this month, so eleven, three seventy-three, so the database continues to grow. We had an article run, Wayne Newey did a good article for me, about the importance, cause I mentioned last month about the demographic that had the hardest time getting to come to see me is the over sixty, and that, from that paper, we had nine vets coming for the first time ever.
Wow.
Including two World War II vets, who had no idea where you'd hear them. So, and one of those, four or two vets, one of the things of prior, my past history, I did ten years of Medicare sales, so, so I'd be able to help a lot in that field with our senior vets, information, and in the course of our discussion, he came in just to, just to get registered, to get counted, and so forth. Well, in the course of the discussion, turns out, if you know anything about Medicare, that if you use too much on your prescriptions, you hit that donor hole, and then you're, you have to pay a lot more on your prescriptions. Okay, well, it's a big thing in the Medicare field, that if you, you're a high-usage prescription person, that at some point in your year, you're gonna hit what's called a donor hole, and then you may go from paying fifty bucks a month to three hundred dollars a month on your prescriptions, okay?
Is that without getting any other supplementals?
Yes. That's, that's with the.
That's just automatic.
That's with the.
That's with the supplement.
That's with the, the Part D prescription plan, okay? So, so, so once you mentioned that, we talked about getting him enrolled into the healthcare system, and because if he gets his prescriptions from the VA, then he'll never hit the donor hole, so it could potentially save him about twelve hundred bucks this year, so. So we did an application, even though he's ninety-one, and he should, should go through, and that should, should be a big help for him, okay? So that's important, just awareness, getting people coming in and have a conversation, cause you never know what you're gonna discover, okay? Um, June thirtieth, just wanted to know, John Grago, uh, who's the Veterans Constituent Advocate on Center of Veterans Staff, been working with him real close since I've been here, uh, he's a sharp twenty-some-year-old kid, that's just a go-getter. Um, and so he inquired about, he usually comes once a summer, just to be available, to hear veterans' concerns and those type of things, so, so he's gonna come on the thirtieth to be at my office, we're gonna set up in the meeting area there, um, so he'll be there for two hours from ten to twelve. So it'll be open to the public, we're gonna get that in the paper, and, uh, he'll be here to also address, get to kind of update on what's happening, there's like six bills concerning veterans going, working its way through Congress right now, that two or three of them are really important, having to do with disability benefits and appeals and so forth, so. And then, of course, the big, big item in legislation is Choice Program, what's gonna happen with that, so, so we're gonna get some updates on that, so.
And he's just here for the day?
Just here for a couple hours, yeah, could be here for the day. Yeah, he's gonna, we're gonna do a two-hour workshop, open to public, and then we're gonna spend a couple hours with some of the concerns I have, and things that he's following up. He's been really good, it's just the way the world works, uh, as a Veteran Service Officer, I can inquire on behalf of veterans, it's, you know, four, five, six times, and, yeah, okay, we're looking at, looking into it. Uh, he'll do an inquiry, and all of a sudden, they get a congressional inquiry, and all of a sudden, people, oh my gosh, we, we need to answer those questions, okay? And he gets results, so, in fact, I just sent him another one yesterday, a spouse that were having an issue with champ VA benefits for her, so. Uh, DU Law School, I brought this little brochure for you. He's one of these, Ann Vessel, who came last summer to my workshop, I've been in contact with her, DU Law School, and a lot of the top law schools around the country have, over the last few years, started veterans' clinics to help veterans with their claims and appeals and so forth. And Ann Vessel, who's a professor up there, started one, two, it'll be three years ago August she started, it's been a part-time clinic. Every Thursday, they're open, and they're, they're at the, uh, Volunteers America Building up in Denver, so, I went there last year to look at it and see how they're set up, and it's a great, great setup. Well, um, I called her recently, we had discussion. My job, which is kind of an interesting setup, because the state mandates this job on the county, and for years, they only gave about a hundred bucks a month, okay? And so this, so I have responsibility, but I'm a county employee, so I report to you guys, but I also have to report to the state, so. And so because I, we, as a county Veteran Service Officer, we actually operate under the state's power attorney, as far as in the VA system, and so I have to do the monthly report, and do the month, the training conversation every year and so forth. They also have a say on what level I can represent vets on the appeals, so they've been, they're okay with me doing the first level appeals, but when it goes to the second level, which is before a judge, they want their own state rep to take over that case. Done one so far, was not real happy with the way it happened, the way it played out. This, I thought the strategy was, should've been this, and they insisted it should be this. I'm allowed to go in to observe and to participate as kind of a second chair, okay? And so we had a situation where the judge did let me give my input, and so here we are, two different BSOs arguing two different.
She said he did let you.
He did, oh, he did.
He did.
The judge, the judge did let me speak, and so forth. But it created kind of a weird situation. Now the judge is saying, well, you're saying this, and you're saying this, and, so anyways, so, and here's what's happening with that situation. The state office does a good job as far as what they're allowed to do, but they have fifty-seven counties, sixty counties in the state, and all those vets, when they go to the BVA, most, vast majority of them are being turned over to the state office. So usually what happens is, they brief over the case a little bit before the hearing, they have you come up an hour before the, the hearing, and then you kind of do your consultant, and so it's kind of a quick deal to do this, and that's, to me, is just, you're not gonna give you the results that way. Ann has, I've talked to Ann, and she, and we've discussed about this, BVA hearings, and they are, the clinic is going full-time, and she's gonna be full-time at that clinic, and we're gonna partner up, Custer County and this, and DU Law School, uh, Veterans Clinic, and I will be turning our vets over to them for BVA hearings.
That's wonderful.
Okay, and as of right now, this Custer County is the only county doing this, uh, so we're the first, and she would like to see more counties do it. She has agreed that she will take any BVA hearing, people that has merit, and so it's gonna be my job to present to her and do all the preliminaries. But what's nice about it is, it does not mean they're gonna have to go up to Denver for a lot of meetings. Uh, they, instead of Skype, they use Zoom, and so we will do a lot of preliminary stuff in my office with Ann, and via Zoom or, or Skype. At some point, we will have to go up there, and do, and spend an hour or two with her in person, but I just wanted to make you aware of that, if, if anything comes down, but, uh, I, I believe this is the best possibility, because I don't care, in the legal system, if I go in there as a credit BSO, the judge just looks at, at certain levels, and, and it's good, but when our vets will walk in and out with a, a credit, VA credit attorney, it's gonna carry more weight. Okay? And it's gonna give them a better opportunity to have a better outcome, and so that's just something that's.
Kudos, forget that, that sounds like a wonderful advantage to all this.
It is, and, and, and just a little background, Ann, uh, her son's an Iraqi vet, so a few years back, he came back, uh, he started working on his claim, and then, of course, he approached her, mom, hey, I'm having some problems here. So she got involved in his claim, that's what got her, it's just all of a sudden, oh my gosh, how complicated can this be? And so that's what got her interested, and that's why she pursued the clinic, and that's how it grown out of, out of that, that, so, so it's a great story, okay? So, um, so sometime I get back from this conference, which we'll talk about next, which I'm leaving Sunday, for a week of training, I have the national conference out in San Diego, looking forward to that, uh, there's some, some great speakers scheduled, a couple of top attorneys in VA law are gonna be there, uh, one, the, the Under-Secretary for B, BVA's gonna be there, that's where all the policies come out as far as disability claims and so forth, and, uh, a couple of different, different veterans organizations are gonna be there with some great speakers, so we're looking forward to it. So I'm leaving Sunday, I'll be back late on Friday evening, so back in the office then following Monday.
Okay.
Okay. Um, talked to Nan down at the Wetmore Library, she says that they're getting ready to open back up down there, so, so prior to the construction project, I used to go down there once a month and set up, so I'm planning on July twenty-fourth to pick that back up. So the fourth Monday of the month is what I've always put out to the public, because like in July, there's five Mondays, so. So I always put that out, that the fourth Monday of the month, I'll be there from ten to three, and, uh, I anticipate that potentially in this next year, I may have to go down there twice a month. Because I, over this last year, I've picked up more and more, uh, vets from Florence Canyon, and even some Pueblo vets, and if that continues to happen, then I'll probably have to go twice a month and be able to help with some of that travel for some of these vets, and minimize that, so.
Well, um, I received information that the keys are ready for the building, so.
Okay.
I'm going to hook up with the contractor, so.
Okay.
I know you're not gonna be here next week, um, and I know you keep your office locked, uh, but the other thing is that the plumber begins his work today, and we're gonna prioritize where he goes first, so that may get fixed before you come back, just so you know what's happening in there.
Um, as far as in that, cause I understand that one side's a sheriff's office, one side's gonna be a county general use office, uh, as far as furnishings, printer, is, is there any stuff there? Do you know?
There's not, it's, right now, it's an empty room.
Okay.
Um, can you let me know what you need, because maybe we can get furniture for you?
Yeah.
Or maybe.
Couple chairs, desk, printer would be great.
What kind of a printer?
Just a, a good quality printer.
But we kinda need to know what it's, no, but what it's gonna hook up to.
Do you want a color printer?
Uh, not necess, not necessary, for what I do as far as when I'm working with the vets, you know, I've got things like that I can do in my office, I can do color, as long as it, it prints good quality printer. Yeah.
But you're talking, you need two chairs and a table? Or a desk?
Yeah, at least a table, yeah, that's not necessarily, it's a good, good solid table.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, downstairs in that building, there are a ton of office chairs, and I think four desks.
Oh. Does he have access open, or is that blocked, there's a locked room?
Down in the annex.
Down in the big room, there's kind of furniture down the basement.
Yeah.
Might be useful, I don't know.
But, but who does that belong to?
You.
The county?
Yeah, most of that stuff is.
Well, do you wanna take a look at that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look, and see, at least for now.
To make sure names, Greg, if it doesn't, let us know.
Yeah, let us know, okay?
Okay, the only two other things on my list, um, when, when I first got hired, uh, I, I started discussions with the county at some point, saying, you know, short-term, we're fine where we're at, but as we grow, at some point, there's gonna be difficulties with where I'm located. And we're getting to that point, uh, the volume of appointments, and, uh, I mentioned twenty fourteen, I pulled all the reports a year before, I got hired, and a hundred and forty appointments for a year, went through that office, uh, twenty fifteen, we did five seventy-four, last year I did a thousand twenty-four, and we're on pace, we're almost exactly where we were last year this time, within about seven or eight, number-wise, so we're on track to break a thousand in this year. And so what's happening is because, uh, I'm, I'm paying for thirty-five, and Friday's out as far as doing appointments in there, cause of the UI class and so on and so forth, so I'm getting, and then can't do appointments after four, so groups can come in and do their, their meetings and so forth, cause of HIPAA issues. So at some point, you can only fit so many appointments between Monday and Thursdays, and so forth, so, and, and the other issue is, it's, it's okay where I'm at, but the issue is still, uh, we do have a lot of coming and going for other things, and so if I've got, especially my PTSD vets, if, my severe PTSD vets who have hypervigilance issues And so if I've got, especially my PTSD vets, my severe PTSD vets who have hypervigilance issues and so on and so forth, anxiety issues, any commotions that can really, they're out of there. So I'll say, well, I'm going to come back, too much going on here. And sometimes it's a button before they come back.
So what are you saying is happening during your office hours in there? Because I thought there was a schedule for after hours.
There's a schedule, but there's still people who come down, car seat people, Legion. There's other, you know, things that are going on downstairs. People are in and out, art noricks in and out. You know, there's, there's just stuff going on, okay? And to have the flexibility at some point to be able to, if need be work. Well, a lot of times I work to five or six anyways and just catch up on paperwork. But if I need to do appointments after four, we do have vets who are still working. And they can't get in there between eight and four. So to have the flexibility to work and maybe to work, a little constrained. So I've, I've talked to them very again at some point. Just still looking to see if the county's open to, if I'm able to find the grant money to cover the expense of acquiring a different location, whether the county would be okay with that before I go down, too far down that road. I'd spend a lot of time on that, so.
Are you thinking about a new location, like storefront, maybe in one of the downtown or something like that?
Small, yeah, there's a couple that I've been looking at, type of kind of just keeping tabs on. You've got around 14, 1500 square feet, have to be able to expand. My, my goal here has always been to go from veteran service office to a veteran service center and be able to expand and do more than what we're doing. But that requires more space for sure.
I'll speak for myself. I would encourage you to find grants if that's possible.
Oh, absolutely.
I certainly suspect that my compatriots up here wouldn't certainly support that. I won't speak for them, but I, you know, they probably would. If we get to the point where the county needs to be involved in that, talk to us and see if we can find budget money to help you with that. We cannot turn our back on our veterans and we need to give the service that. I was so pleased to have you. And I'm not, I'm not kissing up to you, but I mean, seriously, you've done so much for the community. We need to give you the tools you need.
Yeah. And, and so the only issue I see potentially in the future would be, my goal would be only to do this if I can find the grant money and so forth to private donations to cover the whole expense of acquiring the facility. But then of course, then it becomes a monthly issue as far as, you know, utilities and those type of things and so forth. So I just want to make sure that-
Yeah, I'm going to, we're going to have to have a discussion with Donna regarding insurance too.
Right.
A lot of issues that go with it.
Right, and, and that's- And that's the unknown. I don't know what I don't know about that process. So my goal is to try to understand that process and what the complications are. I want, I don't want to go to C before we understand, hey. Okay. But there is a lot of different foundations and grants out there that I think we can tap into to cover the full cost of acquiring. But then it's the ongoing day-to-day usage that I want to make sure-
If you need help with grant writing and that kind of thing, let us know. Brenda's wonderful at it, about several people here are good.
Yeah, I tell you, this county is blessed with a lot of great grant writers. It's just amazing how many are here. There really are, so. But I just want to bring it up again and make sure that if it's-
Feasible.
Feasible, possible, something to pursue. Because I, I think we can take it to the next level. My long-term goal still is to look at, like I said, I've got the tablet from the BVA so I can do some telehealth as far as for my PTSD vets, counseling and so on and so forth. And if that takes off, then we could go back to VA and say, you know, we really need a full telehealth. And to have a separate office, just have a full telehealth setup would be great. Especially during the winter up here. That would be a huge, huge, huge thing.
Do you have an issue with veterans that, because that building is not ADA compatible?
You know, not, not really, not yet. I mean, we've got a couple of vets who-
Because that's going to be an issue, finding it in this town.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I've got one that would almost be perfect. And, and, and the number's not bad. Of course, someone donated a million dollars and that was all. But I just want to let you know that I am pursuing that. And then we'll see how that goes. And the last thing I just brought up is called Veteran Story. Sometimes like, like I mentioned in the beginning, over two vet came in. Those are the kind of stories that kind of keep you motivated. Another story we just had recently, a vet, and it gave me an idea of the timeline of processing with the VA. There's nothing fast, even though this month, what, just yesterday, I found out that we had a claim approved in less than 60 days. And when the vet called me yesterday saying, hey, you got approved. I, I thought it was something, the wrong guy. Except I'm thinking, we just did your paperwork 60 days ago. Can't be, must be a different guy. But no, sure enough, we submitted stuff in April and he got approved. And he had already been raided, so it's just an adjustment to this thing. But still, those are taking normally six months. So, but anyways, one of my other vets who, we started the process a year ago. And he was hoping just to get an increase of about 10%. And we ended up getting a 20% increase. And he, a month ago, he notified me that he was, he notified our foreclosure, started foreclosure process. Well, because we started paperwork a year ago, got the approval, he got retroback. So we got a nice lump sum payment back that was enough to get him out of foreclosure. So, so those are the stories. It's not like money. Those are stories that get you, go, keep you going, so. And that's the importance of going to the conferences, getting the training, to be able, because making a difference of 10, 20, 30% on these disability cases can, can make that difference somewhere they lose their house in that, so. Okay? That's all I've got, other than-
Did you hear any positive reaction from May 13th?
Oh, absolutely, yep. Roger had, had a great time. He really enjoyed it, met a lot of great folks. And matter of fact, he may be stopping through here on the 21st for a couple of hours. Because he's, he's, he's just now getting his access to the VA system for VBS. And so he's supposed to go 21st, get his, his card up at the VA in the Springs. And he's going to plan a detour and I'm going to give him a quick class.
What's his last name?
Watkins, W A T K I N S. He's officially the social director at the Veterans Home down in Lawsonburg. And like I said, he's a walking encyclopedia. Because he got involved in this field in the seventies. He came back from Vietnam and was immediately got involved helping other vets as they came back. So he's a wealth.
Did he find it beneficial to be present at that event?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Made some new friends?
Yep, yep, yep.
Just on the good and wealth there, I would like to thank you and especially Bob for a very moving, appropriate Memorial Day event.
That was the, they're, they-
Outstanding.
I unfortunately was home and bet.
Sorry you didn't make it, it was, it was terrific. I don't want to make this a happy, because it's a solemn time, but the way it was handled was just outstanding and I appreciate it.
Speakers were great.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of good comments, so. But I was new.
And that was one of the best, the General Spoke was one of the best speeches I think I've ever heard, seriously.
General Halter was outstanding.
That was an unbelievable speech.
You know, he is the head of DOLA. He's a, he's a politically important gentleman.
Good person to know.
I mean, I've met him closely.
And he owns property up here north of town. And that's how we got hooked up with him.
Very nice.
So he was a great speaker. We had over 350 people there.
It was incredible.
That's an amazing crowd for our community.
Do you have his email address?
General Halter's? Sure.
Well, you have a chance, if you just send it to me, I'd, I'd really like to thank him for coming and-
Absolutely.
You know, get to buddy up a little bit with him.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Great, thank you.
Well, I'm going to say that in lieu of Bob's absence, I'll make the motion to accept Tim's report as stated.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor, call me.
Aye.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Tim?
Yes.
What is the status of the 2017 trust fund grant?
Been approved. Forty thousand, same as last year, which is really great because the state has 200,000 less this year total. And, but our standing, Custer County standing in that with Gail is about at the top.
I didn't understand you.
Our Custer County standing in with the Brent Gale, who's the trust fund administrator of the state.
She likes us.
She likes us very much. Over the, over the last six, seven, eight years, Anna did a great job. And Ivan's come in and continued that. And she uses Custer County as example. She talks to other counties on how, we're one of the only counties where the VSO and the trust fund are working hand in hand, real, I mean, real close, so.
Do you have any idea when the first check will come?
Probably September.
September?
Probably September, yeah. Yep, yep, so.
Super.
Yeah, this, this, with the state being on that fiscal July, starting the fiscal year in July, it takes about 60 days before they can-
Great, thank you.
Yep, so that'll be kicking off. The fact that we got the same amount as last year is great because we were concerned about getting less, so.
We'll keep you posted.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Keep it up. If you need us for anything, you know, we'll find us. Do you know, here, do you think there are benefits while they're in there or not?
Not if they're just in detention pending.
That we convicted of?
They have been convicted of a felony. And then once they're in, at 60 days, the clock starts just 60 days after the conviction. And then what happens is that if they're single, they get dropped down to 10%. If they're married, they can do an empor, call an emporagement. And then the veteran can designate that they'll be 90, if he stays 100%, he would, he would only be allowed to get 10% paid to him, but he could have the emporagement, the rest to the family.
I was just curious, I saw you had a category for encouraging vets.
Yeah, and because most time our vets are just here and there's detention pending charges. It usually doesn't become an issue until they're shipped out to the state. They have some at the state level at each prison that, because the VA gets notified and then the clock starts ticking. Okay? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, sir.
I know we're really ahead of schedule.
Gary's sitting out there.
Yeah, I was going to say, sorry, Gary.
You did, okay.
Can I suggest that we, since Gary's here and Human Services is not, can we adjust to?
Well, Human Services, we already did.
I'm sorry. They certainly did.
So Gary's?
Good to see you, Bob, thank you.
Good morning, good morning.
Gary, I got a compliment yesterday. I just want to pass on. A fellow stopped me, said that he was riding down Carper Gulch. He said it was good. He said he's used to seeing potholes for months. He said they're all filled in. I said, I have a meeting tomorrow and I will pass that compliment on to you.
I appreciate that.
So that's been, I mean, alls we hear is complaints about the road. The few and far between compliments I want to pass on. Okay, I'm ready.
Yep. Okay. We had a bridge that needed some repair out here in the airport and we did get that done. Didn't take very long, a day or two and it was finished. So we've been waiting on a permit from Army Corps of Engineers to be able to do that. And anyway, we were able to go out and get that worked in.
Is that your general law process to get approval to do that?
No, usually it's pretty short. But this time the individual I sent that to lost my email, so. Yeah, about four weeks after the fact, I called him and he said that he misplaced my email. So within 24 hours, he got me the permit. Yeah. But other than that, we're trying to do a lot of blading. And we've got the scraper in action out here at the pit, trying to remove some overburden that we rented it for. So we're in the process of doing that. And then other than that, we're just doing our routine maintenance.
Just an FYI, I'm not sure if Bob had an opportunity since we did the punch list last week. But we are going to have the open house down at the Wetmore Community Center on June 21. There is some roadwork that needs to be done on the west side of the building. Did Bob get a chance to talk to you about that?
No. I have not even spoken to Bob about it. I was waiting for him to get back. It's just final, we wanted to scrape the front of the building and on the, so that would be the-
West side?
Yeah, west side. We're going to need some gravel because there's a drain that comes in and we can't really put a conduit that goes in the next person's property. So we're thinking about putting some gravel down.
Oh, you're talking, that's the north side?
The north side. And on the west side, not, nothing deep. They don't want to cut a big groove, but just a little channel so that water, when it comes into a channel, is out rather than hits the building. I think in a couple of hours, probably your expert people can handle it. But Bob likes to convey this information. So I was waiting to talk to Bob, so that will be coming.
Well, we don't know when Bob's going to get back, so.
Yeah, I can give you the list of things if you'd like.
Well, there, there's actually a drain that's on the southwest side that is causing an issue. And that has to be switched, like the reverse opposite the way it is. So then it's going to drain on the west, to the west-north side of the building. But with that, I don't know if you've been down there lately. There are SentryLink telephone lines literally hanging from the trees. Have you ever seen that before?
It's unbelievable.
So they're going to have to be buried and I'm not sure if conduit's going to be, you know, the game that's going to be played. But I'll be addressing that. I know that Chuck's down there today trying to take care of some of the business. So I'm going to take a look down there. I'll be taking pictures. But for you to do your work, they need to do theirs too. So that phone panel is on the west side of that building. And it's going to have to go under where you're going to need to make a little ditch, so.
I was going to go look at South Hards Gravel this afternoon. It sounds like they had some high water down there that might have done some road damage, so.
So if you could take a look at that, I can meet you down there, but I need to place a call to SentryLink because that is not acceptable. Not hanging from a tree, from branches.
Now, when you say meet me down there sometime later?
Yeah, well, give me a holler. Well, we've got this scheduled in term. I really can't do it today because of the, of the schedule. And I've got the plumber coming today and cleaning people coming today.
Well, I can make time, so whatever it's convenient for you, why don't you give me a holler and then we can run down there and take a look at it.
What's the best way to reach you?
The 785-421-8315. And if I don't pick up, I'm in a poor signal.
Is that yourself?
Yeah. Just leave a message and then maybe we can run down, take a look at it. But while I'm down there this afternoon, if I can get away, I'll, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, just go and let me hear your comments.
Okay. Yeah, all righty.
Okay. I saw from Brenda that we received one request for proposal. Is that correct? Just the one? Any comments?
Well, I was, I was going to get ahold of CDOT to see what their thoughts were since we have only got one engineering firm that expressed any interest in this project. And she couldn't answer my question. I didn't know if we had to republish and get interest, you know, try and get interest from another engineering firm. But anyway, she, she gave my question to another engineer with CDOT and they're supposed to get ahold of me. I haven't heard, gotten word from them yet on, on this, so.
Well, we had a similar experience with the airport doing work. Yeah, it went out and just one responded. So, I mean, you do the public notice, but do you have a comment?
Yeah, I think the only thing that we have, the only requirement we have to meet is that we put the RFP out for bid. It does not matter how many bids we get.
Okay.
It's just that we did it.
And I was going to get ahold of Jimmy and see what his thoughts were, see if he'd heard of this firm. I, I think that they've done work with CDOT before, so.
Yeah, and actually, this was one of the firms that Kit had on his list that we sent a specific letter to.
Okay, so.
So I think this was one of them.
I haven't called him yet to talk to him. I'd like to visit with him, but I think they're going to work for, you know, for this project. This project is so small that I think one of the reasons we didn't get any interest from a lot of these firms is that it's not a big moneymaker.
Correct, because they're not making any money.
So.
So how would you like to follow up then?
I'd like to call these, this firm here and visit with them a little bit, first of all. And then talk to CDOT and see if it's okay just to go with this one particular firm. But as far as their charges and such, I think they'd be fine to, to work with. And for this particular project, it's going to be pretty minimal, the charges for their fee.
How much, and I've been through this, but I really didn't notice, what is their cost of doing this project?
Their cost themselves. It's going to be the design of the structure itself. And then I don't know if CDOT's going to require that they oversee the project. That's probably going to be one of their costs also. And then of course, there's some travel expense involved also.
And I did, I did get an email from Jimmy just a little bit ago. And basically, we can sign a contract with them, but we can't spend any funds until we get word from CDOT that we're good to go. And I actually just printed that email for you. And this has Jimmy's information on it, so you can call Jimmy too.
Okay. This is on the great group.
Yeah, so, just, just because sometimes it's a little dense. What we could do is approve the project pending CDOT's additional approval.
We can approve it, the, we can approve the design engineer, but we can't spend any money.
We can't actually.
Okay.
We can't give them anything.
We could just give you the authority to move forward once the rest of the ducks are lined up properly.
Yeah, we can choose the engineer, but we can't tell them, yeah, go ahead, we're going to pay you.
So, Clint, have you received a copy of this?
Yes, I was just looking at, I mean, their, their bid is the cost was 15%. Do we have any kind of a ballpark figure?
And I was looking at the original, and I saw that too, and I was looking at the original documentation. And I thought we were looking for design around $12,000 to $13,000.
That sounds right for, you know, based on the overall cost of the project.
I just don't want to give them a blank check.
Yeah, that was one of the reasons I wanted to speak with them over the phone. Tell them, you know, what the scope of the project was and get an estimate from them on what it would cost.
Are we in a critical time crunch or is this a bit to table at the moment and come back? Let's do that. I would really like to get a feel for what this is going to cost. Because if we've proved I'm going to, I'd like to say, however, up to X amount of dollars, whatever's reasonable.
And I, and I think our timeline said that we were going to interview them now. And we would do an approval on the 5th of July.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay, great.
So, yeah, we're still going to talk.
Okay, we're good.
Excellent.
And we should have that letter from CDOT saying the funds have been appropriated and it's okay to go move forward and so forth.
Right.
Excellent.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
You were easy to it.
That's about all I got. Plugging away. Thank you.
How are you doing with your air conditioning?
You know, it's, Byron was on vacation up until about three weeks ago. And once he got back from vacation, I asked him to go ahead and get them ordered. And I'm just assuming they're on their way. I haven't talked to him since then, so.
Good.
That's where we're at.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You bet.
Can we move that we take a, uh, 10-minute recess?
Okay, 10 minutes? How about if we go a little bit more, 12 minutes?
12 minutes, whatever.
So, you're moving it?
I, I just texted Rustin to let me come.
Okay.
A little wait, and we'll take a little break.
Sure, we can move to take a break. He moved, I'll second, move to, uh, okay. Ready? Okay, we're gonna resume.
I've been here and kept for 30 years.
Our meeting coming out of recess. Nice to see you.
Good to see you too.
Good to see you.
Kelly, how are you?
Good.
How are you?
Okay, if I say what, a lot, it's because I can't hear anymore.
You can't hear anymore? What were you doing?
Ran the scraper.
Shooting?
No, ran, yeah, a little bit.
Okay. All right.
I have a couple pictures of the trench that I just dug.
Wow.
They're all finished.
How deep is that?
20 feet.
Hmm, is that what you did with the scraper?
Yeah.
20 feet.
A couple bodies in there. Never mind.
You're being rude.
It was just a joke for the recording.
Jay, that's gonna be all over Facebook.
I know.
All right.
93 feet wide, 400 feet long, and 20 feet deep.
Dang, that's a big hole.
So, that's a third
A third?
of the trench that we need to finish digging.
Wow. So, how long did it take you with that piece of equipment?
Month. Just finished it on the last day of rent also. It worked out really well.
Gary was gonna try to steal some of those days, but obviously not.
No, didn't happen.
So, what does that mean? You're gonna need to rent it again and again?
Yeah.
Two more months?
Yeah, we'll need to.
Will it take three months altogether?
Do what?
Three months? Took us a month to get this far. What?
Yeah, so, so, that's what I've been saying that all day long. Everybody's getting tired of it, but, yeah, so, a couple more times, probably. I'll get on the dozer and I'll, for the rest of the summer, I can start going west some more. You know, take the top soil off and, and the clay, 'cause we need to separate those two, so I can do that.
Does the wind affect you a little?
Get ahead of the game.
Does the wind affect your work that's been done?
No.
Out there? No, you're okay.
Can you start using it while you're continuing to work on it? Or do you need to get the whole thing done before you can start?
No, we can, we can start putting trash in there anytime. Whenever we're done with the other trench, then we can get in there. And that's best, too, because you have to, you're supposed to get all the snow out of there, too.
Okay.
It's a one bucket at a time, you know?
Right.
It's like forever.
I get it.
So, you really don't want it a quarter mile long, anyway.
Before the snow season.
Right.
So, what about the well? Where are we?
Um.
The free well that we were.
Yeah, I haven't heard any more from CD-PHE, which is a good thing. The less we hear from them, the happier we are.
Okay.
I'm sure they'll keep us posted on when they end up with their grant money and which small landfills are gonna come and drill, so we'll hear from them.
I was trying to think this yesterday, and I just can't remember. You had told us a while back when you anticipated our landfill to be full. Was that, was that 10 years or seven years?
No, we're just starting financial assurance and, um, we figured six and 6.3.
6.3?
Right. So, I was talking to Sam Donardo too, and we decided 79% full right now.
Um, we had a discussion multiple months ago about the fees that we charge, and we were thinking of looking at other landfills and seeing if we were in line or if we're too high or too low, and has, has anything progressed on that?
We're pretty, we're still pretty low, you know, as far as landfills go. The only thing that we do that other landfills don't do is we just charge Oak Disposal 830 at Cubic Garden. And we charge customers that come in 10. And so, what started that was just giving the local businesses, you know, a break. You know, get them going and give them a break on that, but no, no other landfill does that. So, if you wanna look at that sometime, I'm sure we can.
When was the last time they had a price adjustment there?
Oh, I just saw that the other day too, and I was going through it. I don't know. 14, I believe. They went to, we went to $10, the Cubic Garden, Oak Disposal went to 830. So, even if they went up to nine, would be a heck of a difference.
Oak.
Oak Disposal.
Yeah, I mean, they upped their prices for this year, 'cause I do a lot of dumping with them. Oh, yeah.
Sorry, Clint.
No, it's fine.
Somebody said they did that a couple of times last year, too.
You should get a current list, and we should probably have that discussion.
Yeah, maybe, maybe for next month, you could, I don't wanna put much work on it, but maybe for next month, you could make a recommendation to, hopefully Bob will be back, Bob will be back, whether we should consider a rate adjustment to the landfill?
Yeah, I think it's time.
Okay, that's three years is plenty, and stuff changes, so.
Yeah, I really, I really think it's time to do it, 'cause it's not a cheap thing to dig these trenches and...
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
You know, we can post that on the website.
Keep it going, so.
The grid go up, yeah.
It's a, it's a beast.
You don't take old TVs or computers, stuff like that?
No, Oak Disposal takes a lot of electronics.
I just took three old TVs there, and they cost me $107.
It's incredible.
Where?
How much?
Oak, oak.
It was 107 pounds for three old TVs, those big, heavy old, and it's helping Jim re-clean out his mother's house.
Well, so they didn't do it by the screen size?
No, you just said by the pound.
Now, recycle, they need to do by the screen size, 'cause I brought some down to recycle along with printers and computers. They charge five bucks for each electronic device, and I think it was a dollar an inch.
Dollar an inch, I think, yeah.
So.
So, if they're doing by that, by the pound, that's expensive.
Other people, you just sit them along the side of the road and let you guys?
No, no, go there. You're on this, you're on.
In a ditch by a culvert.
So. I've done that a few times, or I've seen one sitting there, just I figured I can go pay for it.
I do too. I've done that multiple times. And I understand the problem, of people don't wanna pay to throw away a TV.
They don't.
I mean, I.
Yeah, they don't want that.
I mean, big bucks, if it was a couple bucks, it's one thing. So, getting back to what we were talking about, um, is it okay if I, Brenda, to add onto the agenda that we'll discuss landfill fees?
Sure.
If anybody had.
For next month?
Yeah, for next month.
Sure.
Um, if you would do that, please, Brenda, that way we can have any public, we'll have it posted to any public that wants to comment or concern, they can do that. I appreciate it.
But it would be nice to have that scenario of what I was charging.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll check with Chape County and some of these other landfills that are close. Couldn't see. I saw in the paper a while back that that southside landfill in Pueblo was charged at 25 for a mattress.
What's more than mine cost new? I'm kidding.
And they just end up alongside the road somewhere now.
It's stuffed, full of hay.
25, they're non-compactable, that's why landfills charge for them. But man, no wonder they have a huge problem down there.
Yeah.
That's just crazy.
Can't recycle those?
Wow.
What do you charge for mattresses? Five, 'cause there's a bunch of those too that I'm gonna have to get rid of for Jim.
You better quick, hurry up and get it done before them.
Rate increases, it'd be 25 and 90.
This is inside trading, we can't discuss this.
Yeah, I just know what other landfills are doing, so watch out for the 25 buck, yeah.
Okay. All right, so your scraper, so are we good in your budget, if you need to do that two more times?
Yeah, we're good. With, uh, hauling and everything, they sent me a caterpillar, sent me a bell, and, um, they had tax on there for $524 or something, so I called them and told them, no, 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 no.
There's a tax exempt on that.
So, they're gonna send another invoice. But it was 19,000 something, we had 20 in the budget, so we came under on that deal.
Can I ask on your report, I'm gonna give it to you again, that you wrote running material through Grizzly to remove larger rocks for silk caps? Huh? What's that mean?
Okay, we have that, Mel, you've probably seen it, well, we got it. Yeah, it's still sitting there by the side of the road, it's big yellow.
I saw that thing.
Yeah, okay. You have to run the material through there, and that separates the bigger rocks. And, so the material that we get out of that with the rocks removed, then we cap these pits that are full with that.
Okay, I didn't understand.
The state just doesn't want the big rocks in there because they figure that the water will find a way to get down into the trash, so.
Okay, got it.
We used to be able to just, with the scraper, go in and dig, and then just go over and then start capping another pit, so you never had to stockpile it. But they changed their mind on that. But that really used to work really well. So, we were digging one and capping one at the same time. But those days are over.
I got one other personal question while we're on this. We have Oak Disposal brought one of those big roll-off things there at Jim's mother's house. Can we throw mattresses in there? I mean, if, if they haul it out there?
Yeah, then we'll just charge them.
Okay, but you look.
Because when they dump, then the guys in the pit will tell Jamie or who's ever up in front that day that there was one or two mattresses in that roll-off container.
Or maybe four or five.
Yeah.
Six, seven, eight. Where's that gonna be, Clint?
If you saw them together, it'd be one mattress.
Yeah, that's it. There was a princess sleeping on it, and she needed a lot of mattresses, and there was a pee underneath.
Okay, all right, moving right along.
Moving along, I agree.
Moving right along.
Chairman, I agree.
Plenty of pee on the mattresses.
Don't go there.
All right. Randy, anything else?
What else we have?
I think that's about it. I got a grader out there that I got from Roden Bridge today, so I'm just cleaning up around the trench and getting everything smoothed up again.
Good job.
Back to renting. But that's about all that's going on, I think, right now.
Purple later log, thank you. We'll look for your report next month on prices.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll see if an adjustment's appropriate or not.
Most landfills go by tonnage, and most landfills have scales, too, so we're a little different. But, you know, I can break it down, tonnage to cubic yards, and I can do all that.
Sounds great. Well, thank you so much.
Okay.
Is there anything you need from us that you're not getting?
Uh, I think we're good.
Good, man.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next time.
You bet. See you next time.
See you.
Okay.
See you, Kelly.
See you, Rusty.
You're right.
Have a good day.
Bye-bye.
Jesus. I'll make a motion that we, um, recess until, is it 1 o'clock?
1 o'clock.
1 o'clock, and we'll resume at that time?
I will second that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, is this room gonna, not gonna be unintended, right? I have some, okay.
Okay, you're on? Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody back. We are going to resume our session. It is 1 o'clock. So, next person up is Ms. Donna Hoppy.
Oh, Ms. Donna, how are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
She faked you out.
I'm not letting you go now.
How are you guys?
Good.
Good.
Wonderful, thank you.
There's the checks. Did you need sign?
It's on the hammer.
I know, you don't need a hand sign. That was a good one, too.
Um, before we get into anything, we had an issue at the registration desk. Okay. CCI said they didn't have a record, or that the hotel didn't have a record of the check that you sent for rooms.
Okay.
So, I have a handy-dandy contact right here.
Okay.
His name is Dan at the lodge.
Okay.
But they went back to where all their reservations are held, and they have no record of that.
Of that.
So, we were charged on that.
Okay, and it would have been mailed on, on the 31st? On the 1st now, 'cause they weren't, they, they can't make the mail on.
So, maybe you didn't get it.
Yeah, because that was, because that, that was paid in, in that group.
Okay, okay. So, um, they said. So, you're probably gonna need to pull the check number
Okay.
to reference that for them.
They'll go, oh, we have it on there by now.
Okay, and then they'll credit back our cards.
Okay, perfect. So. That's why I said you know, they should have it, 'cause Brenda had done it, had, had vouched it in, and it had been paid, but just...
Sitting on somebody's desk.
Yeah, that they said, Custer, that seems so familiar.
Well, and what we noticed, at least I noticed, you know how we were talking about in the workshop, having those cards?
On there.
Everybody had cards.
On there. Well, and the only thing about the cards that the auditor said, and because, you know, I know that I won't be able to do it, but if Brenda's willing to do it, ordinarily, it comes on one gigantic bill. And, and to be able to make that work, um, people have to be a little more prudent with the credit card usage.
Like, for me, when I use our corporate card, it's by person. So, would it be by the person's name?
Sometimes it is, and sometimes it's not, and, and it just, and, and if you use it for just hotels and the big things, most of our people here, when they use credit cards, you know, they run and grab just a little one of these and, you know, $1,800 later.
Right.
And it is really, it's just time-consuming
Okay.
um, for whomever.
You know, in the future, not this big, myself, not anybody else, I have no problem putting it on my own credit card and then submitting on Expenditure Board something like that, if it's easier for you.
Um, for me, it's, it's fine either way. I mean, it's a check or which, the only, um, the, the only thing about a P card that, that's different, and not that it matters because people still use their credit cards, but I'm gonna use Kelly. Kelly uses a card, and let's say that she used it for anything besides, like, election meals, when she goes and picks those up in a registration. A year from now, she wants to know who she bought this from. She will have to go back in all her vouchers and see when that was, because we're not paying the place. That's the only thing that, that's hard, because, and, and if no one ever cares, it doesn't matter.
Right.
So, that's, that's the big difference.
What's going on in your life? Tell us, uh, a report or what.
On there. Um, the policies, it, it no, it no quick fix. The policies, it, it no, it no quick fix. Brenda worked on the one, I'm gonna say two and a half days. Chuck had put two, uh, one, and so, but it's ready to go whenever y'all say. Chuck redid the purchasing and has it formatted really nice and cleaned up the forms, because it'd been back and forth and opened and closed so many times, so. And so they're both ready.
Well, what I'm gonna say is then, to send them out to everybody that was in the workshop, because they wanted to discuss it with staff.
Okay.
So that if there's any issues between now and the thirtieth of June is when it'll be on the agenda to propose. So I guess, in that same email, if there are issues, they need to bring it up as soon as possible.
Okay.
So. I know this is... Do you need some sugar?
Thanks for your hard work on that. I know that was a real undertaking, and I appreciate it.
But it's almost done.
Okay, wonderful. Being at CCI, there were lots of topics covered, and one of them was budgeting. Pre-budgeting. And what I found out, that I would like to incorporate in finance. And correct me if I'm wrong, but what other counties are doing are budget challenges and projections five to ten years out.
Okay.
And that would be looking at a whole bunch of things. Programs, levels of service, if we had to do a reduction of staff, replacing positions, but looking at maintaining a healthy fund balance. Also, they suggested you need to take a look at your fee schedules, which we just discussed that with landfill, and I guess, I don't know how often, Kelly, you look at your fee schedule.
Most of my fee schedules are set by statute. But we might, something I was thinking about the other day that we might look at is liquor licenses, because the state sets a fee schedule, and it says, "The state charges this much, and the county can charge up to this much," and we're way under the "up to this much." And I think that was, I think the board set that.
I'll have to look at the minutes, because I've got a copy of them in there. I'm gonna say ten or fifteen years ago. So we need to redo.
Like, do the deals, yeah.
I know JD's not here, and I don't know if there's any scheduling of fees in his office, or maybe planning and zoning, because that's public office too, but anyway, point is, I would like to get a committee together looking at ways to increase revenue. And however, we wanna look at this, whether we develop a roundtable or we develop an executive finance committee to look at, look and present prior to budgeting. So I guess, time-wise, to me, it's a good thing to look at every quarter. It was suggested that we sit down and look at our budget, and if it needs to be amended, it happens quarterly. A lot of counties are doing that, just because things pop up and they happen. And I know you and I sat before and looked at, you know, here's a spot we're not spending anymore. What do we, maybe we need to pull it over here? So when does John do his quarterly thing?
It is, he actually doesn't do it quarterly. He does it monthly. Those reports that I give you tell us exactly where we're sitting. But as far as doing...
An amendment?
Amending, he does it on December, the last business, like, the fifteenth, or, or when he gives the budget. Yeah, when he, when he, when he turns in the budget that I mail to the state, that's when he turns in all of those.
Reports, but could you ask him if it's possible that we could do a quarterly review?
And, and the review, absolutely, but to change them?
To amend them?
We actually can't, we actually can't amend them ourselves, anyway. Once that budget is rolled, it is set in stone, so that nothing can happen. Those supplementals or any of those changes, the auditors actually make that happen and give those to John, and then he puts them in that way, our fund balance for one-one, which, of course, that's why we never quite know where we're at, because the auditors, right now, are finishing for sixteen, and we will get those, and it would set our, our fund balances for seventeen, six or seven or eight months later.
I mean, some of these counties have different managers that they have, and maybe that's an internal thing that they're able to do. But I just think it would be nice if we could form a committee together, and I should include some of our elected officials, and maybe some outside business people so that we have a different set of eyes also, because a lot of us are real close to it. But even setting priorities, you know, five to ten years out, just to look at it, because my concern is our buildings.
On there.
I mean, it's just, it's an issue, and I was also sharing with Kelly earlier. I know that in two thousand and sixteen, I heard JD come to the Board of County Commissioners asking for consideration on, it was like fifty thousand plus for software up to, and, and that's gonna happen eventually, and I don't know where it's gonna come from unless we start saving for it.
And, and that's absolutely true. And I don't, there's no reason that John can't give you something. I mean, there's, it's, it's just a matter of asking, you know, when he's, when he's in there. And I'm sure we could find reports for it. I mean, I'm, are, you know, even though we're, we seem antiquated, you know, I don't have a time clock and anything in there, it, it still will produce anything that we need to run efficiently.
Well, we set that date with Dennis, when was it, the first or second week of July? I don't have that in front of me for our budget workshop. So I guess what I'd like to do is, let's go through that process, and we can start thinking about maybe who could be on that committee, so that we meet right after that, and it gives John enough time, and you, for reports through June thirtieth.
On there.
And then we could sit.
And he does balance out, and, and the, I mean, he will be at the end doing a, you know, where, that we know with the treasurer and, and all the parts, but left them.
And maybe if you wanna look at budget stuff quarterly, like you talked, you know, we talked about the, all the elected officials meeting quarterly, maybe you, you could just do it during that meeting.
On there.
Good idea. That way, everybody has input.
That's a great idea.
I mean, I just think strategically, we, we really, I'm, I'm just really concerned that we're gonna have all these expenses in that way.
Well, and that's been our problem. One year or five years out, we have no more revenue. I mean, that's the bottom line. We ju, we, you know, when, when you get in the budget hearings and you're seeing that we have to cut three hundred to seven hundred thousand, there just is not enough money. I mean, that's, and so we've never really thought very far ahead, because we're just trying to make do, because it's, the fluency is just not there.
Well, their words of wisdom to everybody was to ask all the elected officials to look at their programs and the level of services that they provide. And that's usually the first place that you're looking if you have to make a reduction, that you make that reduction. But I, I would like to start sooner than later, so I think after we go through this initial training, I mean, I think a lot of us learned a lot in that workshop, that...
Oh, absolutely.
It'll bring a lot to the table again, and to me, it's the right timing, because everybody's gonna be thinking about budget.
On there. Well, and, and we're, you know, the revenues are what's key, and that's...
Hey, I'll tell you what, one of the, the last sessions was on the counties that have marijuana as a, a line item on their budget. It was interesting hearing that conversation. It was all over the place. But even a county not much bigger than us, Ruray, has that, and I didn't realize that they are...
Oh.
Yeah. Ruray is growing. That, that was one of the present, the presenters. So it was pretty interesting. But some people even talked about, because there was a whole nother topic on broadband. Broadband even being a line item to save, because people, actually, our county is way ahead in the planning process of that. But Tony was there that we met, and what was explained was, by him, is it's a matter of money. I mean, even though the governor wants to bring everybody up to speed, where does it come from? So some people are actually planning that for the future, because it's, it's just gonna be in one gallon of cost.
Yeah, it, well, and it's never changed, not in a long time.
Speaking of budgets, I didn't mean to interrupt. Were you done?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Speaking of budgets, I was looking at it last night, and either I am missing it, or it's not there, but I don't see the Department of United Services in our budget.
It is way at the back, toward the back, and, and there's several pages to it, because there's, you know, the state...
They get funding from all different places.
I understand that, and when I look at, like, I'm looking right now at the index. Is that welfare fund review?
I'm gonna say yes.
Is that what that is?
I'm gonna say.
Okay, all right. Then, thank you for explaining it. I'll look at it. Thank you. I just didn't know where it was in the budget. Okadoch, what else you got for us?
That was easy. Oh, that's...
You were easy today.
Nothing.
You've really done a lot over and above lately, and I just want you to know that it doesn't go unnoticed, and we appreciate it.
And I don't know if you have copied on the email, but I did forward it to Clint. We got a request from Mark Howard. Did I?
And I did get a copy, and I, I sent him on...
You did send it to him?
I sent it to him online.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
And do you want me to have Chuck post it on there? You know, the whole posting? You know, it's just my matter of that I like to see people. It doesn't matter. I mean...
No, I think you need to see people.
I like, I like the way you've been doing it, and I have no issue there.
All right. Well, thank you, Donna.
Your pleasure, as always.
I'm staying off the smooth back one sheet.
All right. Okay. Next is our treasurer. Let me give her a call. I thought she was here. Well, while we're waiting, Chuck, did you get to go down to the community seminar? I'm dying to hear what you have to say.
All, all the network stations are working fine. All of the phone lines, except for the fax, the one fax, the library, all of them are looking at six-six-six-nine. So they did not put in a line for the county. If they did, it's not hooked up. And I don't see it in the basement. I only see four phone lines. The library, the fax, the elevator, and the fire. So they do not, doesn't appear that they put in the county office or the sheriff's office.
Okay.
But the phones work.
Well, Donna had, Donna, you received the phone bill from CenturyLink, and we figured out one was the sheriff, one was the... So she's got the numbers.
Oh, no, they had not, they had not assigned it. They had put seven-eight-four and four little stars. And so when the bills came, it was, I mean, they've just had passed it. They did not have them assigned at this time, because I'm still waiting to get a road in my phone.
Okay. Did you by any chance take a picture of the outside phone lines hanging from the trees?
No, I didn't. I've heard, I was told that those, that those lines are, are dead.
Are dead?
Yeah, they're not being used right now.
By who?
It came from Link. Wasn't, it was through Link. Then there's somebody else to me.
Go find out if somebody backed up this.
So I don't know how accurate it is, but, but we still need to have Century, I guess Century Town look at it. We look at it, assuming they're not electricalized.
They don't look like electric.
But...
Okay, so how can I help you? Do you want me to call CenturyLink and see?
Well, we need to find, yeah, we need to find out if those, if they were gonna put those two phone lines in.
And they were supposed to.
As far as, yeah. I thought they were supposed to do that when they put the modem in.
That's like over how many weeks back?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the modem was all there, and like I said, I did, I had to play around with some cables in the basement, but I got the fax working. So everything, the library, everything is working at the library. We got, we had some trouble with their book catalog system, but I fixed that yesterday. Everything else seems to be working. There's that one network jack. I couldn't diagnose it because I forgot one of my pieces of equipment, but we don't need, in the library, that didn't seem to work. But we don't need it anyway.
We don't?
No, we're not using it anymore.
All right. Did you ever get the document from when we went to the punch list, and I showed the contractor, your piece of cardboard that you got?
I haven't gotten anything from the contractor, no. I've got everything written down. I just have to make it pretty, as to what the, how those panels are put together. So I'm gonna do that myself.
Yeah, but not...
Because it's too confusing for me.
Well, but Donna, you're still holding that voucher to be paid.
Because I missed the cut, and so...
So we weren't gonna pay that until you were satisfied?
Well, I know where everything goes. So even if, so, like, if they, if, when CenturyLink drops those two lines for the sheriff and the county, if they put them in that mechanical room where all that other stuff, I can plug them into, I know I can plug them into the other rooms to get them to the rooms.
Okay.
They just need to bring them to that mechanical room.
Well, let me make that call, and I'll...
Maybe they did it, but, like I said, I don't see any module boxes, so we got some ideas.
Chuck just told us, not Chuck, Tim told us today that he wants to start working down there on the twenty-fourth of June in his office, which we need a county office.
He's got internet.
Okay.
So that'll work. He just doesn't, you don't have to use a cellphone. Well, he can use, he can plug a phone into it, but it's, it's gonna be in the library line.
But we'll choose to have that done as soon as possible.
And I haven't looked at the, which? Is the sheriff on the north side?
Yes.
Okay, because the county one has two phone jacks and internet connections. I didn't know why there was two in there.
Well...
But, which is fine, that, that'll work, but...
That county line was supposed to be the second line for the alarm system, the fire alarm.
Oh, okay, okay.
So that was the backup.
I guess it could be, right now, both of them are in the library.
All right.
But, yeah, I can, we, we can, we can probably do that in the basement.
Okay. Let me try to reach that manager that you and I both spoke to.
Okay.
And I'll give him the heads up, and see whether they can also cut those lines that are hanging out of the tree.
Yeah, we have to get, or have CenturyLink.
Test them to make sure they are done.
Yeah, because if CenturyLink comes out and put those phone lines, we can probably do it at the same time.
Okay.
On the treasurer, it sounds like a housekeeping that you could handle outside of the meeting?
Yes. You're up.
Let's do the conduit contract first?
Okay.
Let's talk about it.
You have any questions?
I don't, I don't, we didn't get that.
I have amendment number two, is what you, is that what you're referring to?
We're talking, yeah, the conduit application posting technology.
Says amendment number two. And it has a list, and I'm telling you, I read this, and I'm thinking, what is it?
It's our operating systems, Donna's, JD's, and mine.
Ah, that's the software that you, I got it, okay. I thought it might be, but I was thinking, oh, no, it wasn't that.
When, when was that sent?
I don't know. Brenda's sent it out.
It's part of package. Which numbered package is that in?
One, two, three, or four? I don't know.
Probably the last thing you sent, Brenda.
I don't know. Brenda sent it for me.
It's in package four.
Package four, the treasurer's contract, got it.
And is, is the purpose of the amendment to, to what? To extend the contract?
It is.
And to raise the price?
No.
Okay, I like it better now.
They had not raised the price for the next three years, and thank JD for that.
Thank JD.
She's, he's the one that got that ball going.
So this is software that we're currently using, and we just need to extend the term of it? Is that what we're looking at here? And my assumption is you're making a recommendation. Will you approve that? Is that correct?
Yes.
JD, you okay?
Yeah, it's, I, I would add one thing. It's not just software, it's software and forms, and, so like all of our notice of the valuations, tax roll, tax notices, all that are included in our...
Okay, so...
But since we can't contract for more than a year, it has to come up each year, is that generally done?
We just do it for the three years, and if we opt out, then they can't do anything about it. But they have a, we have a three-year guarantee that they're not gonna change the price for the next three years.
Yeah, and they're fast. They've just approved it for up to three years. I don't know that they've ever... But see, there's an opt-out in it that says you can get out after every year, because it's only a year and a year.
There's a taber issue, is there?
Right, but I don't know that they've ever done it every year. They, they do it, and then they just don't opt out. It's a three-year contract with an opt-out every year, is my understanding, to get around tabers. So if you did it for a year and said, "We don't wanna do it anymore," even though it's a three-year contract, they have to let you out.
So JD, is this the software that you came to the commissioners with last year and asked, and said that it was gonna expire soon, like, in two thousand and eighteen or what?
Yes and no. I came because this was going to expire this year. And I was researching and found one that I thought was better, but it was more expensive. So I came and was making a presentation for that one.
Okay.
But...
It was like fifty grand, somewhere around there?
Uh, I don't remember. They were willing to finance it over, I mean, it was a huge... They were willing to finance it over, I mean, it, it was a huge deal. It was like, the conversion cost was two or $300,000. The software and stuff itself wasn't bad. It was the conversion cost, but they were willing to finance it over five years, which meant it was gonna be, I can't remember, $10,000 or $20,000 a year more. And after, yeah, after eight years, we broke even. After 10 years, we would be saving because the conversion was paid off. And then it would be less year, a year than this one. So it came down to, you wanna keep paying this? Or do you wanna pay a little more now and less down the road? And I, to be honest, I dropped the whole thing because I was not treated very well when I brought it up.
Well, I remember that and, and I wanna treat you well today.
Well, I just said the good one. I'm trying to save you a gallon of money in the long term, but this is not a trade to find someone else to.
All right. Well, I just wanna plant a bug in your ears. Just coming back from the CCI conference, topics were all over the place. And one of them was budgeting and how you budget. And I am borrowing the idea, I'm not gonna say I'm stealing it, but I'm borrowing the idea that maybe quarterly, and Kelly just brought up a good idea, maybe when we do our quarterly staff meetings, we can start looking at five to 10 years down the road, if not sooner, and start planning on prioritizing what we're gonna need as far as spending a bunch of money that's not ordinarily a line item, okay? To my knowledge, there hasn't been that planning. And when I, I was present when you did your presentation. I will agree that you were not treated kindly. And that's the last thing that I wanna do, okay? Sitting at this bench. So I think the more planning we can do, you know, we just start figuring out how we're gonna save for items like that.
Yeah. And I will say that is what led to this. Because they found out I was looking at another company. And he called and said, why? And I said, because you have not changed a thing much in the last five years, and yet the price keeps increasing. And I said, I don't think that's right. If you're not going to be up to, and he said, you know, you're right. I'll get back to you. I think maybe we can give you a better deal. And then he called back and said, the next one, we won't increase. What you're paying now, you'll pay for the next three years. And I said, great, put it in writing. And they did. So that's why it just hasn't gone up.
So with all three of you here, are you finding that that software is meeting your needs?
I would say for me, for the most part. There's one or two out there that are better. I mean, this works, don't get me wrong. I've been on forever. I know the system inside out. I can do anything I need to do. We get a lot of like Zillow, CoreLogic, Trulio, want all this information from me. This is written in a proprietary IBM language. I have to take and I have to convert that. I have to convert it to, I don't know, some, well, basically ASCII 2. And then convert that into Excel. Everybody else out there is using the more Windows-based. And when you do that, it automatically converts it into Excel. It would save me about three hours of my time per report, five, six times a year. But as far as will it do what I need it to do? Yes, it will. I think it works better for those two than it does for me.
I have no trouble. I have heard with Tyler, the one he was looking at, that the treasurer's module is not as good as the assessor's.
Yeah.
Okay.
So my only concern about changing and making a long-term commitment, do we know if their software will be updated to be compatible? I mean, I hate to have something that's 10 years old that when the...
Yeah. Well, and to be honest, it was only a five-year commitment that we were making, but that five years was gonna cost us more. Then after that five years, it started going down if you renewed with them. But yeah, Tyler, the company I was looking at, Tyler's a pretty big company, maybe a little too big now, to be honest. Because they started out, they were called Eagle, and they started out in Eagle, Colorado. They got it out by Tyler. Now they're doing Wyoming, Utah, and is it Arizona or New Mexico? Anyhow, they're spreading themselves a little too thin is the problem. But they are updating constantly.
Okay.
From my standpoint, the big problem I have is switching. But you have this, I, I know one assessor who switched companies like three hundred times. He would switch to different one and switch back to, and he said, it doesn't matter who you switch to and who you switch from, you have conversion nightmares.
Right.
You know, you lose data, you have, and he said, it doesn't matter who. And I'll tell you, it'll be smooth. He said, I don't care. It's gonna be, and then of course you have the learning curve of learning. Right now, you know, I can do about anything I need to do. With that, I'm gonna be going, oh, where's the manual? Because I don't know how to do that in your college. So you have the learning curve. But the main reason I looked into it was, number one, it's more Windows-based, which helped me on the other. And then number two, if we did keep it for a long time, it was cheaper in the long run. But yeah, they constantly update. And then I'll say this, they do too. If there's a change in the law, they are required to go in and make the change, and they do that. It's just, years ago, it used to be if I was like, wow, you know, it'd be really nice if it did this. And I called up some other assessors and they said, yeah, you're right, that would be nice. We could call and say, we've got five of us. And they would go, okay, fine, we'll make that change. Now they don't do it unless it's a statute change because they don't wanna spend the money. Tyler is still doing the, let us know, we'll make the change kind of thing.
So what's the opportunity to opt out of this agreement on an annual basis? Is your recommendation? And to go ahead and approve this, but let's look at alternatives for long-term like Donna was speaking about?
Sure.
What's the best way to go long-term?
That's kind of, and that's why I did it last time. Generally with this company, they like to do a three-year. But again, as we said, you can opt out. But they like to do a three-year. A lot came for three years. And as you can see, that's what we're paying now. It never increases.
Right.
So I would say that gives us three years to go in and look at other things.
To research and save some money?
Yeah. Yeah. Because worst-case scenario, you're with them for three years and it never goes up. That's good.
I haven't checked one time to see if there are grants out there for this kind of thing. And I haven't found any.
No.
That was a few years back.
Yeah, they'll do the grants. You guys probably know more about grants than I do. They'll do the grants to buy computer equipment and stuff.
Correct.
They don't wanna do software.
Right.
And that's what we found.
Donna, you okay too? I haven't heard from you.
Yeah, I mean, and, and it's like JD said, when I wanted a change for like the Affordable Care Act with all those codes, they, they just won't do it. So I did it at my end. I made it happen by going in reverse and doing the codes myself. But Tyler was really expensive for my conversion, hugely expensive.
Yeah, I know. I remember I was in that meeting.
Yeah, and, and the figures that I brought were just for the assessor and treasurer because...
Yeah, that wasn't mine.
The guy I dealt with said, we have a separate thing that does finance and they'll deal with Donna separately. So I don't know what hers was, but I was just reporting on...
It doubled it. It doubled it.
I appreciate you trying to save us money. And I like this. Clint, is there any reason why you feel we should not enter into this agreement?
It says all terms and conditions of the agreement remain in effect. And that's definitely a term you can opt out whenever you want to.
Yes, yes.
And that's far enough. I'm seeing a problem with that.
I'd like to make a motion, if you're ready for that.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion and we approve the, is it, is it pronounced conduit?
Conduit, yes.
Conduit. Application Housing Technology Services, Support Services, Amendment Number Two, effective on June 15th, 2017.
And Brenda, did you want to go over to sign? And I'll, that's, I'll email it to you.
It needs to go back to Dale.
Right.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
And then we can discuss it.
Yeah.
Okay, now we can discuss it.
I'll second the motion. So what were, what were you saying as far as?
I just need a, a signed signature, a page, so I can send it to Dale. And then he'll sign, he'll sign it, send it back to us, and then I'll give it to you.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Wait, 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 wait.
Well, this is, you can go ahead and re-vote.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed?
Just as a, as a side, this is a, a future thing, is the equipment that all this stuff is running on is six years old. So it's gonna...
So we need to look at that too.
I don't know if it's gonna last another year or two until we make a decision about which way we're gonna go or if we're gonna have to replace the equipment at some point.
So then...
But right now, the equipment's...
It's a good point. I mean, it's getting old and antiquated. We're gonna have to have upgraded equipment to run the...
Well, if we're gonna go to Tyler or something like that, then let's put the money in the equipment that it needs.
Well, I'm just gonna say that we'll schedule our next quarterly staff meeting. And we should take everything that you're all saying into consideration. Does that sound like a good idea?
Yeah.
I'm hoping that's not a flood, just because I can feel mine.
Mine's going off to...
A way under attack, Chris. Amber alert.
Amber alert.
Yeah. Okay, so who needs this? You do? Do you need to do anything with it?
Not until it's all signed.
Okay.
Unless I need to attest your signature, but if that's not on that.
No.
And I really would like to hear about the future, you know, what way we ought to be going. I mean, doing it for five, but if we have a long-term plan, that's a better idea.
Yeah. And, and the problem that we have is kind of what Donna said. I mean, if hers is that much more expensive, maybe we don't save anything by switching. Maybe, I don't know. That's, as we've talked about, I, I don't know if you two were there when we talked about it, but there's a very limited number of companies that offer this. I think there's like three or four.
God, I don't know.
And that's about it. And all of them wanna charge you an arm and a leg to convert the data because they got you over a barrel.
That's the killer.
Two of them I wouldn't touch.
Well, that's true. There's one of them I wouldn't touch anyhow. So yeah, but so that's the problem. They got you with the conversion.
Do any of them offer a training for you?
Yeah, they'll, they do training.
Okay.
That's part of the conversion package and all that. They do training.
Okay.
This company used to be really good because they had an office in Colorado Springs. And they would, three or four times a year, invite you down for training and stuff. But then they, the problem is they kept getting bought out by bigger and bigger companies. They were last bought out by Xerox. And when they did, they closed the Colorado Springs office. They still have employees doing their program in Colorado. But you have to call an 800 number in New York for support and all that. And now conduit, they split off into conduit. I don't even know where they're based out of. But they just keep getting bought up by the bigger and bigger companies, you know?
Okay. So I guess for those that are present, before we move on to the public health, if you could all look at your calendars, and I don't know what the very last week of July looks like, but maybe we could start looking in that direction to have our meeting and start talking about. Because planning-wise, we will have had our training in budget in the beginning of the month. And I just wanna keep that momentum going so we're all in the same direction. Does that sound like a plan?
You probably think about, I'm guessing, the week of the 23rd.
No.
Because the 31st, the 1st, and 2nd of August are all VOCC meetings.
Yeah. So maybe we do something in the afternoon. Maybe we do a workshop in those afternoons.
I'm good with that.
But I just wanna, wanna plant that seed so you're thinking about money. Revenues.
Or lack thereof.
Yeah. Yes, or lack thereof. Ways to increase revenues. We, actually, you weren't here. Think about ways in your department, if there's costs that we haven't looked at for years, maybe we have to increase those costs. Thank you. Okay. Are we good? Thank you. Okay, public health is next.
Run through my treasures?
No. Yes, you're not sitting up here. You need to sit up here. No, go ahead. Go ahead. What more do you want? Yes, what is it that you want?
I never want money. I didn't have a copy because she said she emailed it to you.
Yeah.
In fact, I think I printed it in a little while ago.
And I understand at the last meeting, there was a question about redemptions and motor V. I can answer those if you want me to.
Well, I didn't know what they were.
And hello.
Redemption, redemptions are, are, we have a taxing sale. And the homeowner can come in and redeem those taxes. Yeah. And it's just a pass-through. We have to show it coming in and we have to show it going out.
Got it. Thank you. Now we have this template. Beautiful.
And your motor V is this, is motor vehicle and it's the same thing. It's a...
That's true.
Yeah.
So any anomalies on here? Anything out of the unusual? Anything?
I mean, you're pretty much set in stone with your fees?
Oh, yeah. Ours is all statute driven.
So just like yours, but she had a little bit of leeway maybe to look at. Like, do you do any of your things say like up to a certain amount of money?
No. All of them, it's just set right where it is. We do have, we've been having issues in the treasurer's office where in the old days, I'm gonna say like 10 years ago, when a mortgage company refied or somebody bought or sold a property, they use always ask for certificate of taxes due. And that's by statute, it's $10. It certifies the taxes are paid or not paid. But now these mortgage companies have found a way around that. The title companies have found a way around that. They'll go to JD's aside and they'll see, okay, this is what the taxes are. And then they'll call us and say, are they paid or not? Now, some of them want a screenshot to show that they're paid or not. And we always tell them, no, we can't give you a screenshot. You have to order certificate of taxes due. But some of them are getting around it by doing that. They'll just, they just don't wanna pay that $10.
Or you can do like we do, because some people will come in and they wanna take a picture of a book and page with their phone, and we charge them for it.
I was gonna say.
They get upset about that.
Yeah, but it's hard to get the money. You'd have to have the money ahead of time because you can't trust them.
You have to take it, yeah.
You have to take it, yeah.
See, and all of ours are phone calls. There are people asking for, email. No, I don't remember it that way. They can get a certificate of taxes.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I looked at it, I printed it at lunchtime. I just got it, and I kind of looked through it during lunch. And, you know, I didn't see anything on here. I'm certainly no expert in this, but.
Well, I guess I should explain.
I was asked are there any anomalies we need to know about?
On, see, the entities that we give the money back out to is like your schools, Upper Arkansas, Silver Cliff, West Cliff, Rye. Let's see, where's the other ones? Those are all, that money that you see there is what we pay out. They'll go out the camp. Our statute is we have to send it out the camp. So any other monies is monies that sits like hers. She's got the recording fees. You have conservation trusts. Grazin is an in-and-out. Various auto taxes are in-and-out.
But you're not asking us to transfer money to them?
No, no.
See, that's a good thing.
See, county general is pretty good, 289,000, but it's, that's going to stop here pretty soon because, I need you to sign that, because we have, end of our collections are coming. June 15th is our last collection deadline, so it'll start going down from there, so.
You'll see me soon.
Okay, good. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Good to see you there.
Did you?
And I could just.
Do you want to make a motion to put your report?
No, you usually don't.
They just, I couldn't remember. Yeah, Tim's is the only one that I'm aware of. I'm sure you don't want some sugar, have you done?
Maybe.
Okay.
I'd like one of those London bars.
Okay, public health, would you like to join us?
Oh, man, I got so much to tell you. Am I Friday? How are you? All right, so first of all, I have this contract. Did you guys? So it's just our nursing contract. So I need it just signed, and Rhonda was sure to remind me to tell you to please sign it in blue ink.
I have blue.
Blue, only do blue.
So Clint, you're okay with this?
Yes.
You're good with it? Okay, good, thank you. So I know I wrote kind of a novel here for you guys. I'll try to maybe shorten it up in the future.
We've got a good feel what's going on. There's no issues here.
So, coming up, so I just came from the interagents' meeting. I got some fantastic ideas and things that we're going to start working on through that. But we're, our biggest thing is next week, we're coming, we're doing that FedEx program or drill. So.
Is that a drill to deliver packages real quickly or something?
So what it, what it boils down, I know, right?
It's a joke.
Well, it kind of is, though. It kind of is because, so it's a public health statewide drill. You know what it is. Come on, Jay.
Just has FedEx, so.
I know, it's confusing. So we have all of our deliverables met for that, other than sort of just doing that actual drill. So Beth and Carmeline and I, along with Ted Wigan, are going to be going down to the pod on Saturday in Pueblo. So that'll be very educational for us all, I'm sure. So Ted did his, he's going to be our, I don't know, our grader, I guess. He's going to keep doing his training for that yesterday, so. So we're all set. We have several MRC members going to be a part of it. Cindy's going to be there. We'll be good. Community outreach stuff, I have two days a month through August. I'm going to probably end up adding more CPR training, totally booked up. So Custer County should not die of a heart attack because we're going to be doing lots of CPR. So, and that again is just a service that Public Health is providing. It costs $5 to get the card, and that's it, so.
I had a question under communicable disease. What is STI?
So they, that's the PC term for STDs. Now, it's a sexually transmitted infection or illness. Because disease has a stigma with it, of course, so.
So it's infection?
So unrelated incidents, same infection, but unrelated.
Okay.
So, but it's also been treated, so hopefully nip it in the bud quick.
Okay.
Our environmental health guy's going to come up and see me next week so we can kind of be on the same page with that. The circus is coming to town.
No, it's not, is it?
Oh, I don't know.
Oh, yes, it is.
I think so, yeah.
Oh, yes, it is.
It's scheduled, and they called me.
It is coming to town, along with all the protesters.
Oh, gosh.
It is coming to town.
It's going to be a real circus.
Someone was calling to see if they could, did she ever contact you?
Talking about Annie Kearns?
Yeah. She tried to call me, and I returned her call. I haven't heard back yet. They were trying to get out of it.
So it's, last I heard is the board, this was last night, I heard their board. She apparently signed the contract without discussing with her board. Her board identified it, so to the best of everybody's knowledge, as of last night, it's still coming to town. I'm only concerned about diseases from maybe, I mean, obviously concerned about the health and welfare of the animals and the performance, but I'm worried about if any disease gets a touching elephant, so I don't know.
So I have been, I looked into all of this, of course, since I knew that this was coming, and I have been reassured that they've been tested. They have sent me documents from the state board of, not state board, but the state veterinarian, saying that, you know, they have like.
Checks as these.
Trunk wash, blah, 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 all that stuff. They've dotted their i's and crossed their t's, so.
And their website, well, the websites about them is not very encouraging.
I saw those as well.
So I'm concerned. It's just a concern. I mean, it's a private entity. We have nothing to do with it.
Right, and they have the.
They can do it.
Yeah, they have the permits that they need in order to do it.
Yeah, I received a call last week saying, how could the county commissioners give us permit? I don't know what you're talking about.
We did, and it was a state permit, and we don't regulate it, so, yeah, unfortunately, so.
To the best I know, the circus is coming to town.
In more ways than one. Let's see, yeah, so our mobilization drill is good. Tentatively, our next health fair will be April 7th. That's what works best for Custer County, so hopefully the nine health fair will go along with that. They give us like a month, and they say they'll do it no matter what, so I think we'll be.
That's great.
Yeah, I think we'll be fine there. So Carmeline's been doing all kinds of great stuff with the OPPI grant for us as well. Vaxcare, we got Vaxcare yesterday. Oh, yeah, so. The medical director, I spoke with.
I was going to ask you about that when you were done with your report, what's going on?
Well, Dr. Ginger Dunham Smith came to my office this morning and wanted the contract.
I thought she said she wasn't going to do it.
Dylan told me she wasn't going to do it.
Okay, I'm very confused. He's the boss, isn't he the one who would say yes or no?
No, he's the boss of the clinic, but he's not the boss of Ginger.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So she can do it if she wants, because she's not employed by him.
I didn't understand that.
Yeah.
I didn't understand that.
So I gave her a copy of Fremont County's contract that they have with their provider, who is also looking at serving us in Custer County. So she's looking at the contract. She said by the end of the week, she'd let us know. But it sounds like she's going to do, she's going to continue to be our medical director. She just wants that contract.
Okay, so if that's the case, we probably don't need our meeting tomorrow morning?
I still think maybe it's a good idea to have the meeting.
I will meet tomorrow morning.
And this is why, because I think that we need to be on the same page with exactly where Public Health and the clinic, where our relationship is.
And that's really what I was hoping you could kind of explain to me and tell me elsewhere. How does this actually work? What is her role with Public Health? I know she's a doctor with the clinic, but how does she interact with you? And what is this clinic for? And is there a fee involved? How does this all work?
Okay, so, right now, she has really just been graciously signing our paperwork because she's with the clinic. And because we, up until now, have had our vaccines ordered through the clinic. So when we severed that tie by going with Vaxcare, that's what spooked her because she thought she's not going to be covered as far as, you know, any kind of malpractice that she would go. So, and she's in every right to do that. So, but she kind of has understood and has taken the time to look into it and understand that it's a service that we need, that she can provide, and she's, I think she can.
And you're comfortable with it?
Yes, yes.
Excellent, good.
And I will send you a copy of that contract. The one I gave her is still all Fremont. It says Fremont County, their doctor, the whole nine yards. So it's nothing that she can sign, but I'll send you a copy so you can look at it and make sure it's kosher.
Well, then what does that do with the contract we already signed?
Do we, okay, so that's another question I have. Do we have a contract with her already?
With Vaxcare?
Oh, no. Okay, so Vaxcare, we're covered with Vaxcare because they have a state medical director that covers them. So by default, we're covered.
But can we get out of that parade of Vaxcare? I guess it's not costing us anything.
It's not costing us anything, and we don't, we don't need to. It's just going to be kind of a fallback person, their state. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
So we should be able to provide, well, we are. We actually already have it. It came today in the mail, Prevnar 13 for pneumonia vaccines. We can do shingles vaccines up here now. We have, there's like five different vaccines that we can provide Custer County that we weren't able to before.
So how are you going to get that word out to the public?
We're going to do a press release to the paper. We're going to, the senior centers, we do blood pressure checks, so they already know about it. All the seniors, the senior centers in Wetmore. I guess at this point, that's where we're at with that. But the clinic is also advertising for us, so.
Do you think it should go on our website?
So I have a little, yeah, I agree, yeah. And I have a little public health part of that, which I need to look at because honestly, I haven't yet.
Okay, so Chuck can help you with that. But I think that might be a good idea.
Perfect, and I talked to Donna as far as like the billing, because now we are going to make revenue off of this because we're going to get the fees for the, for actually providing the service, whereas the clinic was getting that before, so.
So do you know where to set those fees?
It's going to, could be in the immunization line item fund, so Donna's helped us set that up.
Great.
So what, that's about six, eight weeks now?
Five weeks.
Five weeks? You okay? Everything under control? Can I help you with anything? You're not getting ready to tell us goodbye?
No, no, no.
Are we doing okay? Do you need anything you're not getting?
So far, I'm good. I, because everything I've asked for help with, I've gotten it right in a very timely fashion, so.
I feel very comfortable. I'm really glad to hear.
Thank you.
Did you have your training with Gail?
I did. She came on Monday, actually. Yeah, so that was very helpful, plus amazing. She got a new job working for the physician that convinced me to go to nursing school.
Oh, my gosh. Small world.
Small world, and of course, we didn't know, you know.
Cool. It's pretty neat.
Well, thank you for your forward.
All right, thank you.
If it hasn't taken a while to get us.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you there.
You too.
Okay, next up is extension.
Or not.
Or not.
We're not technically extending.
No, you're not. Yes, actually, we do need you to amend that title because it's not extension. It would be what her job title is. Coordinator.
So you're a good thing to mention.
Yeah, so it's not, so people don't get confused.
Correct.
So Sarah, how's it going?
Good, extraordinarily busy, as you can imagine. Beverly did a tremendous amount of work before she left, thank goodness. And especially on the accounting side of it, she just, it was amazing. And getting us back up to speed where we need to be, and I'm just pressing forward, really obviously focused on the fair and getting our kids and our families settled back down. We still have a lot of fear factor that things might implode, and, you know, just a lot of nervousness there to rebuild. Our numbers are great, and kids are doing well. Families are encouraged and doing well. We have some fairgrounds issues. I don't know if you want me to visit with them, but we did need to visit with you today, I understand, because we've had a proposal, actually an offer, extraordinarily generous offer. I had gone as the beef superintendent, volunteer beef superintendent for the kids. I had visited with Trent Stafford about the possibility of extending our wash rack because the steer wash rack, for anybody that's tried to drag steers in there, it's narrow and it's short, and we've got 17 head of steers that are all going to try to get ready for fair on Friday morning. And so I just asked what it would be possible, just, there's one little section right where we're unloading hogs that could be just poured with concrete. And he said, well, while we're talking about this, let's go look at the beef barn. And the long and the short of it, he said, this would not be any big deal. If you can help me find a few people to help finish, we will donate the concrete to pour this beef barn. And he said, this gravel, it's a wonder we have a cripple to steer. And it was for dust control years ago when that, I guess it's Indian Sunset gravel Trent taught me. And he said, it's extraordinarily dusty and it's sharp, and, but served its purpose then with the best intentions, I'm sure. And so the conventional wisdom is, it'll be like any other show barn you find around any, most fairs, where that barn is poured, it'll be broomed, so it's not slick for the cattle. But then the cattle stalls can be banked properly for what those big steers need for comfort and whatnot, just with shavings. And in that, then our kids would be notified that they'll be buying some shavings this year. But it's just a matter of now whether or not you all feel comfortable pouring that whole barn in concrete.
I defer. I don't know the answer, so.
No, that's fine, I understand.
Well, but are you saying that you've got in-kind funds to pour the whole barn, or no?
We have a volunteer offer that says Beach Ready Mix and Trent Stafford will pour the concrete, and Trinity Huffman and Triple T Construction will bring in the crew to help finish. And Brian Lewis said, I'll pitch in anywhere I need. So it's mainly 4-H's parents that have that ability and the willingness to do it as a donation to the program. And they're ready to roll as soon as you all give it the blessing, if you would like to do that. It's obviously, that's a barn that is always in discussion of its longevity. However, we've had it a long time, and we're probably going to have it for quite a while longer.
Yes, we are.
And so.
You may not know this answer, but I'll throw it out anyway. Do you know if they all have insurance and?
They're all, I mean.
They're all ongoing contractors and stuff?
Yep, that's what they do. And that's where Trent was like, this is, it seemed like a huge project to me, and he's like, for what we do? And then I spoke to Trinity, who also pours a lot of concrete, and he was very comfortable.
Okay, so we're just going to need their certificates of insurance so that Donna has those on file. And I would also like to announce that last week I did a donation to the fair board, so it is in your, it went to the general fund allocated to the fair board, so.
Yes, they let me know that that money may not be available for the beef barn project because, and they didn't, Audrey. Audrey, I said, now, I understand Donna's intention for this offer, for any overages for our improvements on the beef barn. She's going to help do that. Well, that's not just for the beef barn. So I just let it go because the money is there if we need it.
Let me make the announcement because I did not allocate it, that it had to be for capital improvement. So I'm going to say that the fair board may use that as they need it.
As they need, okay, perfect.
I think it's very important to recognize.
Thank you.
I think it's very important to recognize the people who made the donation, so it's something.
We can do to thank them.
Proclamation, something to thank them for a very generous donation. I think that's very important.
Yes.
Yeah, if they could put an in-kind amount on that because that might, just so that we have it in the record.
Okay.
Well, you have good news today.
And I just want to clarify what she was saying, that Beverly's gone. Beverly's on vacation. She's not gone.
I think everybody sees Janella.
I do. Beverly's coming back, back to work.
Yeah, I would have been out the window had she not.
Well, we have her recorded, so.
She will be, yes. She will be back the 19th of June. Correct, that's true. Wise rhetoric.
That sounds like a wonderful, wonderful donation from these folks, and I'm in, how wonderful. How would you say?
And our office is still getting, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would just like to know, because I couldn't make the last meeting, I changed the date. Are they going to be consistent with their days of meetings? Because I'd like to come.
It wasn't, it wasn't discussed as far as getting off the schedule. I don't remember why that change had happened, but I knew that it worked out well because it allowed us our suspension to be lifted. So it was actually good timing to have the meeting a bit later.
So we're okay with judges and?
That's all, all those details, that fair board is doing a fabulous job to just keep working on it. And Beverly and I did attend, both of us, to get just a work list from fair board saying, let's make sure we're all on the same page, who needs what, who needs what help, where we. And so that communication is well-going, and Beverly had a very well-done just checklist of things, don't forget, don't forget, and the details that, you know, sometimes you get in a hurry. So that's all been passed back and forth with fair board, and it's good.
I do have a call in to Eileen to tell her that, so as the treasurer.
Okay, and I'm not concerned about it. I know, it's a wise fair board. They'll use it wisely.
Okay. Clint, I'm just, I don't know what to do. We're about a half an hour ahead of schedule. Should I just keep?
Well, since we just had Jackie, we could take an hour break.
Okay.
These gentlemen are here for the health department. They're two septic contractors, plus this is Jason Coleman, who does outs, Brad Ballsley. You guys don't recognize them?
Is anybody else coming to here?
Yes, because we have to, we have to switch gears if we're going into the health department.
Is there anybody else coming? I mean, we not asked till 2:30. I don't want to cut anybody else.
But I told them two.
Oh, okay, perfect.
You told them two? Okay.
Two.
Okay. All right, so are we switching gears then?
Please.
Okay, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we come out of a regular session, put it on hold, and enter into session as the health department for Custer, for Custer County.
Okay, I'll second that motion, it's stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed. Okay, we are now proceeding as Custer County Health Department.
Okay, so we, last time we met, we rescinded the motion. But we need to rescind another motion. We made, we, at one time, we made, we, when I say we, I don't mean we. You, as a board of county commissioners, made two motions. You made a motion to have the outs analyzers, soil analysis required to have insurance. You also made a motion that the engineers would be overlooking my work as far as. So one motion got rescinded, but the other one did not.
I suggest that we have our conversation and where it goes, and we can determine whether we're going to rescind or not rescind that based upon what kind of information we receive. Does this sound reasonable?
I guess, yeah, I have a concern because I know Clint prepared a resolution that he.
That's, yeah, but that's a whole different resolution.
Okay.
That's for the engineer.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine with me, so.
So I'm going to tell you, I started bringing this up earlier this morning and Clint suggested waiting till this because I didn't realize we would have other folks here and I thought it was still old business. The concern, of course, was that since the county, you approve septic systems, that you have a, you have the ability to inspect the system itself. But the weak link is that you're not able to determine if this, and if you need anything, just jump in guys. That the soil analysis, part of it, you're not able to verify that by inspection. So if for some reason the soil inspection made an error or something else and the system failed, but we as a county signed off on it, we could be held accountable since we're the ones who authorized and accepted the septic system even though we were not able to verify the soil sample. So the thought was, the people who do the soil sample, if they have insurance, that would protect the county. And alls I'm trying to do here is protect the county. I recognize this as an issue for you folks. That was the motion and it was passed unanimously at the time. Since been rescinded. Kitshai came with the suggestion that if we do an engineered system, then the engineer would be responsible for the soil sampling and the county is relieved of that liability once you go out and approve it. We have someone who has the insurance in the event that the soil, any system in that that they do, they have insurance that if it fails, we have someone to go back on who has insurance. And my only concern there was doing investigating and it looks like an engineered system will cost $5,000 to $10,000 more than if we did it the way we've been doing it. So it's going to increase the cost to whoever is paying for the system. You know, a considerable amount, but not enough to swatch the deal. So that's my understanding. Please correct me if I did not explain it correctly.
No, I think you explained it perfectly. I think that you're going to see a cost. Plus, we have the state who does their own regs that the engineers participate in. And then we have another set of regs that we do personally that is more stricter than what the state does. And those are our individual regs. It is my understanding at this point in time that Chuck Constantino, I know I'm messing up too. From the state said that there would be no way that Custer County could or would be held liable. Yes, we might have to go to court if something happened, but we would get out of it because we do not, as a government, it's hard, those are not, one of the things you can sue a government for.
We have government immunity, I understand what you're saying. But the concern was that if you sign off on it, since the soil sample is an integral part of it also, that we're also basically authorizing the entire thing, including the soil sample, which is something that you're not able to look at and verify. That's my concern.
And there would be two things, you know, that could be done. Either we don't have, we, the county does the soil sampling themselves and then you would have it from step A through. Or we do it as we do and take the chances, or we have them all engineered.
Is it possible, I'm just throwing this out, is it possible to, for the county to contract with the soil sample folks? And then they would be, if they were working for the county on a contract basis, then the county under itself insured, but our insurance would cover that. Is that a solution or not?
No, not really, because my soil samplers, I got four of them, have already taken the course, spent the money. And one of them, two of them run big equipment, you know, and they don't, they want to do the whole step, that stuff. So basically, that's where we're at now, but you can let these gentlemen talk.
I was just going to ask them if they, to tell us how they feel. If you're ready for that, are you done explaining?
Wait, Jay. Hit the road, Jack. Okay, no, we welcome your comments.
Yeah, please, we really want to hear. We want to work with you. This is not, we're just worried about our liability. That's all we're concerned about.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, from what I understand, the county can't be liable. But the last suggestion you made of having somebody actually on the county's payroll or contract for each one, you know, whatever, I think that's a great idea. Personally, I'm licensed to do septic systems and soil analysis. And to be totally honest with you, I think it's somewhat of a conflict of interest. I would be willing to drop my septic license if that helped in any way.
Why do you feel the, I mean, it's all just one system, it's just two separate parts. Why would it be a conflict of interest? I'm kind of curious.
Well, because if you're really trying to get the job, you can fudge numbers.
I don't think that would-
I'm not saying anybody does do it.
I get it, but it would be easy to do if someone wanted to.
Yeah, I'll do your soil analysis. I'll give you a good type soil classification and we'll drop this system to 5,000 instead of 8,000.
Got you.
So I'm not saying that happens. I'm just saying that if there's potential-
It's a conflict, yeah.
And yeah, I would, if you were going to do something like that, I would be willing to drop my install license to help out if that did. As far as the engineered system, $5,000 to $10,000 more a system, that seems a little high to me. I was thinking more 12 to 1,200 to, I mean-
That's what I was going to ask. Yeah, where's this baseline of engineered systems?
Look at, you're looking at me like I'm-
Yeah, I mean, to me, because when you said that, I thought that was high myself.
I'm willing to do anything.
But that gentleman signs my paycheck, so whatever he says.
He doesn't sign. I sign it.
Please.
Oh, forget it.
If I say something that's not appropriate, educate me.
Okay, so I'm, you're looking probably at, I'd say the tops $2,000 more. But and everything I want to say is, it's almost like if I run a business and I'm speaking for the other soil analysis, if I run a business and I see where I could actually get my job done faster, plus I could do the same thing. That's how come I have two large contractors that also went and took the soil analysis test. Because they want to be able to say, "I went and did the soil analysis and I finished the septic." They don't want to wait and then stuff. And I guess basically what I'm saying is, it seemed like a little thing became a mountain all of a sudden. And so I've been going through this and my choices are either we stick with what we're doing and bite it when, if something happens, or else have engineered, all engineered. We're looking at eight to 12, but that's not a guarantee because an engineer could think that they had the niche in life and say, "Well, now I know that they were 800, but now I got Custer County and they're all engineered. They're going to be more expensive."
That's a question. Jason, if they went to engineer, does that mean you don't get to do any more of these?
The soil analysis? No, I'm still required to do the soil analysis for the engineer, for him to design the system. The thing about engineering a system is that the state's regs have kind of taken care of that to where if it's anything less than a perfect situation, it has to be engineered anyways.
Got you.
Meaning that if the soil doesn't fall into a strict parameter of their guidelines, then it has to be engineered.
If we agreed to go with engineer, it's not going to hurt your business?
I mean, it's a rising cost and a rising cost in anything that's going to affect the economy.
I get that, but I mean, we're not going to approve a house without a septic, so someone's going to end up biting the bullet.
Yeah.
Did you have something?
I think that's a growth deterrent.
Yep.
What, what is the growth deterrent?
Increase in the cost of septic systems without, we've got a book already that's over a half inch thick of regulations that we go by. I've been installing them for 23 years. And I oppose the unilateral engineering. Because this book was already designed by the state's engineers. We put them in per that, that, the set of codes. And Jackie comes out and makes sure that it's up to that. But it falls on their design already. All of our criteria have to be met by what the engineers put down already.
And I'm with you on that, that the design and the build is certainly something Jackie can sign off on. If the soil itself, you can't review that, if that analysis is done inappropriately and there's a failure because of that, that's my concern.
Right, and so should you have a system fail, you have to prove what failed, what caused that failure. Now, if you have a household that's using 10 gallons of bleach in their laundry a week, they can cause a perfectly good system to fail. Because you kill all the bacteria and that's a living, breathing organism. It requires oxygen. All of that bacteria requires, is required to function for that system. Okay, misuse can cause a system to fail. Whether he does his job perfect, she does hers perfect, and I do mine perfectly, you can kill that system. So you have to prove that it was a county screw up or if somebody dropped the ball along the way. How do you prove that you're at fault anyway?
If someone came in after a failure and did a soil and analysis and said, "Wait a minute. I have a different result than what was originally stated when the system was designed." Is it possible for the soil to change over time? I mean, if you say five years later, my analysis now is different from what it was then, should it be the same?
It should be, yeah.
So that would be able to indicate that that's when a failure occurred, if that's the case.
If that is the case, right. Right, but I don't see that that was the county's liability if you had a licensed soil technician to use.
Aren't you saying we have four currently, right now, four licensed?
Right.
And the issue was your expertise, you haven't gone through that process.
No. See, and that's what I said, there's, to cover, probably should just go through the class myself.
I was going to say, why, why, isn't that an option? Yeah, why are we fighting this?
I'm not fighting it.
No, I, no, I didn't say, why am I fighting this?
Yes.
I'm just concerned by like-
Yes, why are we fighting this?
Let me cut to you something. You brought up that I think is a very good point. I think you mentioned also. Do you think that sovereign immunity would protect us in this case?
Somebody can always sue, but yeah, they'd have to prove negligence on the part of the county. And I don't see it would be negligence if we relied on a soil analysis.
No, and actually the failures that I have been on have been the homeowner.
Right, and I'm sure that's right. I'm sure they pour, like I say, bleach or sulfuric acid or something down there.
You know, when I say growth deterrent, you're talking $800 to $1,200 in increased cost for engineering only.
Right.
That's not for installation.
I understand.
His design, you pay $800 for you to design me a system, you could increase that cost $5,000 to $10,000 based on what you tell me to put in.
That's where I came up with that number. I wasn't talking about his design. I was talking about the overall cost might increase as much as 10 grand.
If it's a soil replacement, we have bedrock.
It is.
Or even now, Jason just did one for me, where it's decomposed granite, which by the new regulations is classified as bedrock. It's a sandy, grainy stuff that I could dig eight feet deep in. By our old standards, that was a standard system. We were good to go with that. Now we're not. So now I'm engineering this system because it's decomposed granite. So now what we're going to have to do is the engineers, I'm going to pay the engineer $800. He's going to tell me to over excavate four feet, replace it with percolable soil, wrap it with plastic or an old perimeter. You're talking $5,000 to $8,000 increase.
Or bring in washed sand.
Yeah, which can be really-
Which only is available in two places.
Let me ask you a question. What percentage roughly of the permits that you issue are, require them to be engineered? Do you have any idea?
No, I wouldn't even say half.
No, it's pretty low.
It's pretty low. Anything out in the valley floor is a given.
The guy down there on 254 that we've talked about who built his little home up on top of the rocks? And he wants to put in a fellow that works at Chappies, that guy, I mean, you gave him a-
Variance for a porta potty for a year.
But where is he going to put?
He's not going to. If he has to put a system, it'll come off the hill where his camper is and it will be engineered and it'll be a mound.
Okay, and it would be very expensive for him.
So, so taking this course, Jackie, I guess I'm of the opinion that it's always nice to learn something new. Do you see that as a positive or a negative for you?
I see that taking the course would be a positive. I see that me doing them would be a negative because I have four, just four at this time. I will have more. I don't want, I have a job at this point in my life. I don't need to take another job away from four gentlemen. I wouldn't mind taking the course just so that-
So you have, you can look at something. That's what I heard.
The soil analysis, so I can go out there and, and look at, see if the contractor's actually dug two holes. And if, you know, because after a while, it doesn't take, you know, I know where the water is, I know where the clay is because I've been on a lot of sites. I'm not saying I know where everything is. But I can usually tell when they come in the office, like, "Oh, wait a minute, you're in a water shed," but, you know, and stuff. But I don't want to take the four, four jobs away from these men that have done this.
No, and that's what I'm, I'm not coming from there.
That's why we're talking about solutions.
I would like to know with what you were saying earlier, would you be able to look at a result and say, "Yes" or "Nay"? "Yeah" or "Nay" that that is true?
You'd have to go through another analysis to see if it was-
Yeah, I would go through the analysis just to say, "Yeah" or "Nay."
Can I butt in first?
Please.
There's, there's one problem with that. When I do a soil analysis, I have to have an eight foot hole, profile hole, so I can see down into those depths, see how deep the roots are going, because that obviously tells you how deep the water's going. You know, there's a million things that, not a million, but there's a lot of different things that come into play on a soil analysis. And in the, from the time I do my soil analysis, through the permit phase, through the install phase, through all that, I will not leave the eight foot hole open. It's a liability for me and the homeowner as far as animals falling in and children, anything, you know, it's too much of a liability. And without an eight foot hole, I think that the class would absolutely do good for Jackie because then she could, you'd have a good idea of, is that, is that analysis correct or not? But there's, there's just no way you'd be able to really do a full second soil analysis. But it would give her a good idea of, is this looking right or is this absolutely off, you know?
But if you go to Fremont County, what do they have, six inspections? Because you dig the holes, the inspector comes out and looks. Then you go back after the soil analysis.
The soil analysis and the original inspections means.
And then then-
I designed the system as well.
And then Fremont County, yeah, but we could have, see, that could be combated too. Because I agree with the eight foot hole, you know, and stuff. I, I agree that an eight foot hole is very dangerous to leave open for animals or children or anybody, old men, anything.
Old ladies.
You're saying my check. So anyway, I agree with that. It's back to the trust issue. So should we just carry on the way we are and have a little trust in the way we've been doing them? Because most, and I agree totally that a lot of them are customer issues or we used to use 30, 34 pipe. That was a big, huge deal. And we changed our rigs to 40, scheduled 40, which helped a bunch. Should we just go and see how we go or?
Hey, can I, can I give you a-
Sure.
Okay, I've been doing these 23 years. I put my, my own in, was my first system when I got licensed, 23 years ago. I put in nine infiltrator units, okay, if you're familiar with the infiltrator unit.
Not.
I put in nine. I raised a family there. I still live there. I have yet to have an issue.
I understand.
Okay, I put in a system this morning. Jackie was out inspected this morning. I have 60 units.
Oh my God. What are you doing in a complex?
The leach field, the leach field is almost three times the size of the cabin that we're building.
Right.
So our, coming down from the state, these regulations have increased
I understand.
every six months to be more and more and more and more and more. So they're so over-engineered now.
I understand. And the question is to me, and it goes back just to liability for the county. That's all I'm concerned about.
Right, right.
I heard from our attorney that there would have to be negligence here. Negligence on us, the inspector. And if you rely on, if you rely on someone who's not licensed, I would say, "You're probably negligent." I'm not the judge, but I would guess that would. But if you rely on the four who are licensed and any others that become licensed down the road, I would say you did your due diligence and I would feel much more comfortable that the liability would be very minimal, let me put it that way.
We do have a provision, excuse me, in our outs resolution that denies any liability on the part of the county. And I guess I probably should have mentioned that a long time- I guess I probably should have mentioned that a long time ago.
That helps.
Well, it's, I mean, it's there, we give them a copy of the resolution.
Still get sued.
Yeah, you can still get sued, obviously.
So based on what I'm hearing now, I mean, maybe we ought to just drop the whole issue and go back to the way they were originally and say, "The liability is not as significant as I truly thought it was?"
Or that I truly was thinking.
Okay.
And as we know, that this started with a perfectly good reason, but, and it escalated. And that after...
It's been so long.
After thinking about it and stuff, we're just going to, I would agree totally.
Okay, well, we learned a lot. I mean, when we first, you and I first talked about this, we thought this is a weak link in the chain and that the county was taking on significant liability.
And at this time, I think that you're good. And let's fight a war that's worth fighting.
But do you wanna learn about soil? You wanna learn about dirt, Jackie?
Yeah, and I'll look and see when the next...
Class is.
Class is, because I think it's over in Alamosa.
Okay. Clint, do you think from a legal standpoint, retracting both our votes that we took, well, we've retracted one, retracted the second one, and going back to the way it was, is legally a viable way to go through this?
I do. I'm just out of curiosity. I mean, I've talked to Kit, I know he's advocated engineered systems for everything. Do you know why he feels so strongly about that?
No, I don't.
Okay. Because I remember when he was a commissioner, he brought up a couple, I mentioned it in passing, but, and I know I saw, maybe the way you gave me was outdated, but there was some language in there about liability.
You know, we tend, as a contractor, I make more money on an engineered system. But I, you know, I can't agree with forcing that onto somebody for no benefit.
A lot of extra money.
There's a lot of extra expense, and I see that as a growth deterrent.
I absolutely agree with that.
Well, as a person who's getting ready to put a septic in, it's sort of, I mean, a lot of my costs have increased, and a lot of that increasing just sort of...
Put your every edge.
It made her ill.
It's the cherry, the cherry on top?
And as a, and as a homeowner, getting ready to put a system in, you're comfortable with the system that we have in place, and I'm not talking about a septic system, I mean, the methodology we use.
Yeah, because I, I don't think, I mean, how long have you been doing this?
Oh, for the county, 10 years, and I probably installed for 10 years.
And in that time, how many of those systems have failed? Would they come to you and say, "It's your fault that..."
Uh, one, Bretterhoff, right across from your grandpa and grandma's.
I did repair on it.
Uh, if you remember that.
So one in 10 years.
And you know what that was? That was an engineer, and he lost his license.
Mm-hmm.
Fremont County. So, yeah, so.
I'm at zero for 23.
There's no guarantee that even our engineers...
I get it. I fully get it now.
But I, I just have a twist on this. So you're strictly, I just wanna clarify something. This is residential only, not commercial?
No, commercial doesn't have a choice.
I was gonna say. Because I thought, I knew I had to do it.
Uh, it's a state rate.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to clarify.
Just because you had a huge system.
Oh, be quiet, Jackie.
I would like to make a motion. I move that we rescind the requirement that we had made, I don't remember what meeting it was, a few meetings ago, to where we had an engineer oversee Jackie's approval of the design of septic systems.
I'll second the motion as stated. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Call the question.
Call the question. You're making me laugh.
Do you want me to say all those in favor?
No. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and saying your inputs.
Now, we're not gonna, we're just gonna not...
In 23 years, I've never had one fail before.
Well, it's like, nice to hear those statistics.
This was a...
And I'm sorry for your...
This was a series of activities to do the right thing.
It was for a...
Not all the information was understood, but it is, no problem.
It's something coming.
Good.
All of mine said October 5, 2016, that's the date we got.
Okay, we'll find it. And we can do a fine. Also, the state has now changed their septic rigs, and they will be new septic rigs going into effect...
Double Rs, because we need a fine.
June 30th.
This year?
Uh-huh. And we, the zoning office has to implement them by July 1st. I did wanna make the point of saying that if they would hold off, the new soil will be decomposing granite.
Okay.
And they've added a couple more soils.
Okay.
So if you wanna hold off, then it would probably save you some money. Not, but if you've already sent it to the engineer...
Have not.
Okay. So if you haven't sent it to the engineer, I would hold off and tell them first.
Okay.
And they're allowing decomposed granite now?
It'll be another soil classification.
I have one, I'm gonna, it's being engineered right now because of it, so...
Yeah, so we'll have to see.
Yeah, I would turn mine in.
So the new rigs are online at the state. I think I'm looking to see what the soil says.
Right, perfect. And we completely understand where you're coming from, because we feel the same way. I put my systems in according to all of these regulations, because I feel I avoid liability, because I say, I put this in the way the state says I should put it in, which, you know, is the same thing you're saying, you know? We don't wanna, you know, appoint a finger at us, so...
I won't appoint a finger at anybody. I want it to vote forever, but just in case.
Right.
Who's gonna be on the hook is what the concern was.
Right.
Okay. Anything further for the health department?
Nope.
Okay, then I'll make the motion that we come out of session for the health department and resume back into our regular meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Thanks, guys.
All in favor?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Aye. No, thank you.
Keep her out of that.
Okay. Um, next is OEM, and I saw...
She has other stuff, yes.
Oh.
Planning and zoning.
Oh, hit the road, Jack. I've got it.
Okay, can I have this resolution and put void on it?
It hasn't been.
We haven't done it.
So, but can I have it, just in case we wanna do it later?
Fine, it's fine with me.
So you're gonna stamp it?
You just put point on it.
It is a work of art, probably framing it.
I know. It's not signed, so I'm just gonna do this.
So, see, this is what I'm thinking, that I just want something like a piece of art of Clint's.
And you can scare people with it. Here's what we're gonna do if you don't shake that.
You act like you know me. Okay, so here's the deal. We did our ounce thing, and then now that the commissioners do not come to the planning commission anymore...
I do. I was in a conference, I planned a conference.
Oh, I know. But see, since that role has changed, I do a report, and then I recommend, I give you the recommendation, I don't recommend, I give you the recommendation that the planning commission has done. Well, the planning commission is going to recommend an approval for West Cliff Supply. I need a date for you to accept it or disapprove. And it would have to be anytime, and you'll, you're gonna get a report.
Well, there was already something where, I think it was in the minutes, where it was not recommended. What was that? I circled it somewhere. Somebody did not recommend.
Minutes from the...
Mm-hmm. That's why I'm curious, because it said, "Do not recommend," "does not recommend." So Jackie, you didn't read those minutes?
No, I just don't.
Okay.
Oh, Kathy Trask. Kathy Trask is Division 2 Water. So what she's telling you on the front is that if this well is used, it has to go into a commercial exempt well, which means that you get to use 130,000 gallons of water a year, which would change ed lines out of a domestic well, which is a 35-acre well, into the commercial exempt well, which is about $100. If you will notice, the state of Colorado will allow you to haul water. So we did conditions, and the conditions will, will address the water issue, and will also address the bathrooms and everything else. So that's what you'll see.
Okay. I just also wanna say, my God, the activity from the end of April until now, is this normal activity?
Yeah, people show up and they're naughty.
You gotta change your, you gotta grammatical. In your letter, you send out the standard letter, like the one to Scott Williams, the first one here, it's come to the attention of this office, that evacuation has been started.
Yes.
It should be excavation.
That's what I was gonna ask. What the hell was evacuation? I saw that.
And that's on all those letters that you send, so they can evacuate on the property once they get their set...
They better have a septic in if they're gonna do it.
It's evacuation.
What pages up?
The very first one, it's on the letters.
Well, it's all the ones where you send about excavation starting, but it says evacuation.
Oh, how cute.
On the...
Hate it when that happens.
I hate it when that happens. And you know what? Not one of them has seen it.
I've read every one of these letters.
So they're gonna evacuate.
It was the same letter over and over, and I read every one of them, just in case one of them was different. I never noticed that.
I did, but I didn't understand the link.
You would not agree with it even if you did notice it, correct?
Well, if I noticed it, I would've said, "Is it evacuation?"
You would've, and hurt my feelings?
No, I would not have done that.
Okay, there we go.
And I didn't, being company, I wouldn't have done a one-on-one.
Assisted.
I know.
That's one of those things, when you put in different letters, but your mind sees what it wants to see.
And it's spell-checked, so it's not gonna pick up that it's a unspelled word.
Evacuation. Did I tell you that I'm in the fire department now?
No.
That's the septic system, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, so the reason why you will get copies of these letters is that you will find that sometimes you will get a call...
I would like to get copies.
Uh-huh, and then that way, you're not left in the dark, and you can say, "Oh, she's evacuating." Yes, she does this all the time.
I get the wrong answer, you figure.
Okay. Uh-huh. So would you, you're always gonna get letters, even if I don't...
It's okay, no, I enjoy creating them.
Okay, even if I don't show up at the meeting, I, you're gonna get copies of the letters, because you don't wanna be left in the dark.
Okay.
Because you wanna know what I'm doing all the time.
I see you finally got a response from those people up in Rollins, Wyoming after...
No, we're not gonna go there.
Okay, but, I mean, you've been trying for two years to be the...
It didn't work out, so don't get excited.
Well, at least you've made contact.
Uh-huh, but now she's saying that she never got her check back, and today we got a big envelope that she never...
Signed.
Right.
So Kit got returned to you.
Mm-hmm. But we probably, I got some loan notes who, if you could set a date to go over that SUP, because now you're gonna get, in your report, you're gonna see what the planning commission's recommendation was, you're gonna see the conditions, you're gonna see the original, and you're gonna get a packet. And you're gonna know why people voted for the way they did.
Okay, that's good.
So how about, I need to talk...
About Tuesday.
This coming Tuesday? Would that give you enough time to look at the packet?
We don't have a meeting on Tuesday.
Are you saying just between you two?
Just for the commission.
For the commission.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry.
No, we don't have a meeting until, I mean, can it, can it wait till the end of the month or no?
June 30?
We have a June 21 meeting.
Yeah, and which is down, that's the open house, and that, that's building already. How many items do we have on that agenda?
Um, not that, I think we have two right now.
Only two?
Yeah, but one of them is that half-hour thing with the...
Cattle guards.
Yeah.
Is, is June 32 late, or I mean, is it...
No.
Okay, then, let's do June 30.
Okay, let's do June 30th, and then Brenda, you'll tell me the time?
Um, well, I can guess.
It depends on who's conducting the meeting.
And what is this, how do you want it listed?
I would say special use permit for West Cliff Supply. Please? We're so cordial when we're in public.
And you're being recorded.
That's right.
You do the September 9 special use for West Airport. Okay, quite a while ago, I gave you a packet that had Silver West Airport special use permit and stuff. Okay, this is on the second board that we've had, but what happens is when you're, everyone gets special use permit, even the county. County gets building permits because we need the process to continue. So when they did the airport, they had a special use permit. The airport special use permit, as you read in my letter, has been out of compliance, and that's one of my jobs, to make sure that they stay in compliance. It says authority board.
Oh, I remember seeing that.
So we really need to look at that and set up a time for the planning commission to review it in a public setting.
Okay.
So if you'll look at both the suggestions whenever you get time, and we can, it's been like this for quite a while, we can wait till the end of summer and things calm down a little bit, and we're bored to do that. Okay, correspondence, zoning report, you got that? I guess you know that every time I do a cease and desist, I have to call deputies in to help, and yesterday we have an incident that had to do with septic system and stuff, but I will keep you apprised of that situation.
Did they have their body camera?
Can I have one of those?
You have to ask the sheriff.
Did that go okay, cease and desist?
Yeah, they weren't home. It's kinda helpful when they're at home.
How do you actually do it? You don't put that tape up, do you, or do you...
I do. I taped their door, so that I would know if they opened it, and then...
You take a picture?
Uh-huh. Yeah, and this situation was really interesting, because it started out innocently, of a house going up for sale, and a well-tested E coli.
Yeah, I read that.
So it started out instantly, but we don't jump to conclusions, because animal droppings So it started out innocently, but we don't jump to conclusions, because animal droppings cause it also.
Okay.
And they will run a test between animal and human. And, uh, so that started out innocently and then, uh, the poor new deputy, he probably thinks I'm an animal.
That's probably a good thing.
Baptist.
Baptist by far. So when Jason and him showed up, Jason says, Elizabeth called the sheriff's office and said you forgot your tape. And it was that new police tape. And I said, that's not the tape I wanted. I said, I needed, uh, packing tape. And he goes, oh, let me get my tape for you again. So he goes and gets the tape and then he says, uh, uh, I said, oh, now I need a pin. And so he had to give me a pin. And then I said, all that's over there in that car, but that's like twenty extra steps for me to walk. And then I, then I says, oh, by the way, I've lost my tape measure. And so Jason goes and gets the tape measure. So the new deputy's sitting there, just standing there going, cause this is his first day, you know?
He's brand new.
Uh, brand spagadu. Looks, uh, and, uh, Jason says, this is what she'll do, Eric, she will come unprepared or she is prepared and doesn't feel like walking. So then I, I said to Jason, I says, oh my gosh, what do you think this is going? Jason says, oh, I don't know, you're the expert. And so I said, oh, I don't know. Eric says, boy, you two sound like you're married. So then guess what Jackie said? I wouldn't mind that. So cute. Hey, we're done and you're waiting to do what now?
Executive session.
Executive session. Well, did you want to accept the OEM report as is, or, I actually, Cindy asked if, we wanted her to come back, so.
Is she coming?
I, I don't know if I got that response.
I read the OEM report.
She's in a training class.
Okay. Um, can we just postpone it until next meeting?
Table. So we'll put it back on.
Down below?
Yeah.
Or down in what more?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. And we'll let her know?
Thank you.
Well, you can come to what more anytime.
Here, I'm gonna take a piece of gourmet sliced love cake and then I'm leaving.
It's really good, the lemon bars are.
Who made those?
Sam's Club.
Sam.
Really?
Sam, here, let me lift the lid for you.
You don't lift domestics.
I am, but I don't have.
While it's open, Clint.
Really? Tell me, tell me something.
While it's open.
That I make?
Uh.
Baking or?
Yeah, I need some baked goods.
Pitsels?
Okay.
What do you mean, you need some baked goods? For what?
For, for no.
And you think I'm gonna have time to make baked goods?
I don't think that's why I put Sam's Club.
Didn't you just get through saying, I like to bake?
You make good brownie blobs.
Blobs?
There's a story behind that, okay.
Okay, I got this new hand that they advertise on TV, the one that's orange and has all the little squares, so you don't have to cut the brownies.
Oh.
You know, you've seen them?
Are you still recording or are you?
We're recording. Really?
We have to go into executive session.
So anyway, I lifted it up and it became one big brownie blob, so I just smashed it together with my hands.
Um, I would just like to say, thank you for bringing, even though we, we put it away today and said we're not gonna do anything. I appreciate you thinking about the county's liability and looking after us and saying, hey, I found something I'm concerned about and letting us go through the process of determining. It's really okay in the end, but I really don't ever hesitate to do that. That is the right thing, I appreciate it.
Well, thanks for saying that, because I feel like sometimes I'm setting you up for a fall.
Oh, gosh, no.
But you know.
You brought to me what could potentially be a liability, I concurred with you, we went through the process and found that maybe it wasn't what we thought. We fixed it. I have no issue there.
I know, but I don't want.
So please, don't ever hesitate to bring something to the.
Do you want me? Do you want me, I don't want.
No, but you know what, I wish we didn't get their names on record.
Brad Balsey and.
Jason Coleman.
Coleman, okay.
Yeah.